Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can. We can hear you. It is eleven fifty-seven on my watch and everyone's trickling in here. We will do a sound check here maybe a minute before we get going. Once we've done that, I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Hinkle.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Heidi may need to come and go, but she was planning on attending for at least a part of it.
I'm here. I may need to bug out if we're not done yet, just to get some things ready for this evening. But yeah, I'm here.
All right, let's do a quick sound check here. We'll start with you, Mrs. Hinkle. I know yours is working, but just check it for me with your video.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon.
Very good. Mrs. Shuts.
I'm here.
Very good. Mrs. Gordermaker.
Right here.
Gotcha. Mr. Barsonus.
Check one, two, and let me know if I need to turn up or turn down.
You're a little low, but we can.
How about there? Check one, two.
You're good. You're good. Looking great. Dr. Bros.
I'm here.
Very good. Mr. Brown.
I am here.
Ms. Wolf.
I'm here.
Mrs. Ink.
Present.
Very good. You're actually outside, and I think Mr. Brown is faking it outside.
I am.
Yep, actually out.
And Mrs. Albers.
I'm here.
All right. I think I see everyone other than, nope, there he is. All right, the entire cabinet's present. So now that it's noon, we will get started.
Well, hello everyone. Oh, Mrs. Hinkle, there you go.
You go ahead if you want to. I was just gonna basically turn it over to you anyway.
Okay, no worries. I was kind of waiting for the whole reading of the mission statement, right, the whole protocols for our board meetings.
I'm sorry.
Very good.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't have the agenda up. Let's try that. If we can go to the next page then.
Well, if we're, Dr. Dexter is needing to call form a roll since we were online.
Okay. All right. Dr. Dexter, will you please do that for us?
Sure. And I just recorded that the meeting started at twelve PM, and so we will call roll. Mrs. Albers.
Present.
Mr. Barsonus.
Present.
Dr. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mrs. Ink.
Present.
Mrs. Gordermaker.
Present.
Mrs. Hinkle.
Present.
Mrs. Shuts.
Here.
Mrs. Wolf.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. And so, Dr. Grover, I don't have the mission statement, so I think we can probably go ahead with the welcome.
Okay, very good. So thank you everyone for joining us for our retreat today. We definitely have with us all of our cabinet members as well as Mr. Jack Sheard. And just thank you so much for being continued to be committed to our mission statement of every student, every day, a success. And we continue to be better and stronger together. We know that twenty twenty has certainly brought a lot of interesting and challenging events for us, but because we are a strong team and we do know our north star of our mission as well as our vision for our students to thrive. And so today, the focus of our agenda, we will be looking at how we keep Grand Island Public Schools going forward. And you can see the agenda that we have outlined for you today, just as maybe a couple of housekeeping points for us. Dr. Dahl is going to be running the slideshow for us. But at different points, we will have other members that may want to share their screen too. So we just appreciate your flexibility and thank you in advance as some, we may need to go in between some of the screens here today. But you can see the topics that we want to cover for you today. I did highlight the breaks because I think that's important for you to know that you will have a break that's coming up. As always, feel free to stop and pause and ask us questions as we go along. What we really value about our Board of Education is certainly your input and your insight and being able to give us direction as we move Grand Island Public Schools forward. We have scheduled We have scheduled the agenda to end around four thirty, so we will try to be mindful of that for your time as well. So let's look at some outcomes that we have for our time together today. As we look at our strategic plan, and this is certainly an opportunity for me to pause and think the leadership that's here on the team. While we've been faced with COVID, we continue to look at our graduate profile and everything about our strategic plan from our pillars to our objectives as well as our student success measures to guide our decision-making throughout the district. And so today, we will present to you what we have accomplished on our strategic plan as we come to closing out year three, what was accomplished in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, what will be our focus areas for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as well as to indicate where we had some impact from COVID nineteen and how we will be addressing how that impacted our work of the strategic plan. And again, I certainly want to acknowledge all of our staff members. Even you can see this and you can hear this, no matter the modality of the platform in which we educate our students, we continue to be focused on our strategic plan work. Built within our strategic plan, we have two areas that we'd like to do a little bit of a deeper dive into. And one will be to affirm our equity statements and our commitments. The Equity Task Force has been very diligent about their work, and we have a definition that we'd like to present to you today as well as the commitments so that we can have consideration for your approval at the July board meeting. We'd like to take a look at our next steps from our staffing study. We had a wealth of information from the staffing study and outlining now what does it take to take advantage of the findings from that study and what will be the impact to Grand Island Public Schools as we go forward. During our e-learning opportunity, we learned a lot about our students and their needs and their, what they need from us to continue to accelerate their learning. We will share some insightful data with you from e-learning as well as our grassroots efforts of a new initiative that we have created called our game plan. And that is very strategic to be able to support the students with any learning loss that they have and also other strategies that we will be taking to ensure that we can continue to close the gap from what we know our students experienced through COVID slide. We have reached out to our community as well as we're in the process of reaching out to our staff members to gain their insight as well as their input to help guide our decisions for our fall opening. And we'd like to share that information with you and give you the opportunity to give us further input as we look to announce our plans for our fall opening. And as we close out today, we know that extracurricular activities continue to be a huge part of how we support our students in Grand Island Public Schools. And we have a few ideas that we'd like to discuss around our athletic programs and how we can continue to have as many opportunities possible for our students across our grade bands. And ultimately, we want to gain your insight and direction to help keep GIPS going forward. So with that being said, we'd like to go ahead and get started. And we will start with our strategic plan update, which will be mostly provided to you by our cabinet leads. And again, we want to be able to pause, get your reactions, as well as answer any questions as we go forward.
Dr. Grover, before we start, I just want to double check. I did send it to Kelly, knowing that she was out of the state. I dropped it off, I think, to the rest of you, but we did not send you the electronic copy. So does everyone have what, what they need, or does anyone else need that email to them? I see thumbs up. Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Jennifer, for dropping it off. We do have a lot of information there, and so we knew that these hard copies would be valuable to you. And so it looks like, again, we're focused on our four pillars. We're going to start with our first pillar of empower, and we will work through starting with objective one. So cabinet members, as you go forward, just kind of remind us which objectives you are referencing. And again, remember to pause to take opportunities for input and questions. And I think Dr. Palmer will be starting us off.
Very good. Good afternoon, everybody. And so we are going to start with objective one is really focused on having our classrooms and schools be led by instructional experts who guarantee the delivery of a rigorous and relevant curriculum to all students. Now, so I was thinking about updating you. There's a lot of information on this page about the things that we've accomplished and what's our focus. So I tried, I thought I would just like try to do a high level and focus on the biggest highlights because there's a lot of work that was done, and it would be hard to go, it would take a lot of time to go through all of that. But I want to tell you what some of the things that we're most proud of, and when we think about ensuring that our teachers have access to high-quality curriculum, curriculum maps, common assessments, and academic programs. Some of the things that we're really proud of that we accomplished this year was the work around our literacy and the adoption, and the adoption of some high-quality instructional resources. And I feel like our team is really focused in on providing our teachers with, with those resources and then teaching them how to actually utilize those, especially at the elementary level. We really can, we did conclude some study that we had started with Learning Sciences International, the middle school, which really led to also the purchase and the redesign of our curriculum for middle school at ELA and math. And so we're pretty excited about that as well. And of course, we, this year three of Learning Sciences International, and so, you know, as we work with our instructional leadership, their work has had instrumental impact, not only on the leadership in their buildings, but also across the district as we brought that learning into our principal meetings throughout the year so that they could learn from each other. So, so some great impact there. Our focus for this next year is, of course, might have been influenced a little bit by COVID nineteen around some of the things that we're doing, but we definitely are gonna, we've created, Mrs. Gannon has actually worked through and developed a district, a systematized district-wide curriculum framework that really focuses around our, the implementation of our instructional vision. And so and that is, is ready to launch. And so we'll be working on launching that, really trying to build coherence across the district with our supports around curriculum instruction assessment and professional learning. And we are going to start another pilot. We've synergy, obviously, the adoption of synergy last year had a great impact on us, and we're really trying to build some alignment to where teachers have direct access to the information that they need in order to deliver the curriculum. And so we're digging into uploading and creating a pathway for teachers to access all their curriculum in synergy as well as the assessments that they'll deliver to students, which will give us access to data further down the line as we were looking at district-wide data on progress towards those important standards. And when it came to our trend walks were really important, the professional learning that we were providing, we wanted to make sure that it was being implemented across the district. So we started out, really want to get to that analysis level of knowledge utilization where we're seeing students own a lot more about learning. At the beginning of last year, we were about seventy percent implementation of standards-based learning, and this year we're closer to eighty, between eighty-five and ninety percent consistently across the district with being standards-based focus. And but we have some work to do when it comes to improving the rigor that's happening and the tasks that students are engaged in in the classroom that really helps support that higher-level cognitive learning. So right now, we want to get to, you know, really research is about, we want to spend twenty-five percent of our time in that high level, twenty-five percent in the low level. So, you know, we want to get to where we're at that twenty-five percent or more in those higher level of knowledge, at the highest level of knowledge utilization. And then grading surfaced, really came to the surface. We knew we had some work to do there. We have a really strong foundational grading guidelines and practices developed for our teachers, but we, we have what surfaced through COVID nineteen was the inequities that we were creating through the implementation of it. So we are really going to dig into establishing some really solid equitable grading practices going into this next year. So that's definitely a targeted focus for us. Some of the things that were impacted, you know, we, we were going strong, had great momentum with developing our assessments and working with synergy to upload the curriculum that was delayed as we went into March. Just because of COVID nineteen, we had to really prepare and support our teachers with e-learning, and so that, that's just been delayed. We have some teachers working really hard during the month of June, trying to, to catch up on some of that and making sure that we're also addressing unfinished learning at that point. So and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that's going on around that. And so I'll just pause. Any questions around high-quality curriculum? From strategic initiative one? Okay, I will move into strategic initiative two, which around professional growth systems for teachers. Some of this is, is really just becoming a part of what we do with empower hours. I should have, I should have got the hours, but it was a lot of hours of empower hours that teachers were able to engage in this year, and that's really proven to just become part of what we do. It's embedded, and teachers are personalizing, choosing professional learning that aligns with what their needs are around some really focused instructional improvement areas. We had seventy-nine teachers that participated in the letters training and by choice, and that's pretty impressive when we, we think about, we put the why out there as to why this is so important for our kids, and the teachers saw the benefit, and the data was there to support the impact. And so that was pretty impressive that we, we had that had that number of teachers involved and really praised them for their professional learning. The Standards Institute, we had a large group that attended the Standards Institute, truly impacted and supported the importance of our high-quality instructional resources. And so our team has really dug into learning more about how we can be a leader in that area and, and helping support our teachers. And the why behind it is because of the outcomes that we want for students. And so we'll continue to, to work on that. We think about going forward. Again, the professional learning that for our teachers is really continued focus on getting to those, supporting our students around those higher-level tasks that engage them in higher levels of cognitive learning. We have ninety teachers now enrolled and, and seven principals enrolled in letters training. They started this summer, and they will continue to work through that, gather some data throughout this next year that we'll be able to share with you at a later time. We obviously, with COVID nineteen, had to dig in and focus in on how do we diagnose and address unfinished learning that happened during the spring. So that's going to be part of our focus around that professional learning is how do we help teachers identify that, diagnose it, and intervene at the appropriate times. And so we'll be doing some focus around what that looks like. And again, the learning management system and the integration of technology. And we have a sense of urgency for a lot of reasons to provide professional learning for our teachers, be prepared for that at any time, but we've learned some things about how the technology can really be an innovative way around and to support engagement for our students. And so we want to maximize that learning and build off of that and make sure that that becomes part of, integrated into what we are doing. And then, of course, there's high-quality instructional materials, and we have some new resources, and we need to make sure that our teachers are implementing those as they are intended to support the learning outcomes that we desire. So there will be some, our curriculum instruction and assessment days that are designed, K-12 are going to be focused on utilizing those high-quality resources and maximizing that for student impact. Some of the things that were impacted and, and these are, when we say COVID impacted, doesn't mean it was bad. There's always a good thing that came out of some of, some of the impacts that happened. And we're, we're better in a lot of ways for, in some areas. Empower hours, you know, obviously switched right away in March to focusing in on e-learning and how teachers can be better teachers with the e-learning experience. It did delay some facilitation training around PLCs, and we targeted PLC facilitator training, building capacity with our teachers to lead in their small groups, and we had to delay that because of COVID nineteen, but we will reignite, and we've got a way to kind of keep it momentum going with our leadership, but we will build that into summer of twenty twenty-one. And teacher evaluation and professional goals were finalized based on data from March sixth. So a lot of teachers really didn't get to conclude or formally conclude their, their professional goals. So, you know, obviously, it didn't count against them, and they were able to share how their experience may be elevated and need for some additional professional learning goals going into this next year. So any questions about professional growth for teachers?
And I just was wondering, the, the ninety staff that are enrolled in the letters training, are those ninety additional to the seventy-nine or, or seventy-nine plus eleven?
Ninety additional. We offered it up to K-one, K, K through three teachers. And so, I mean, we, we almost have all of our kindergarten teachers trained at this point, which is exciting.
That's awesome. Yeah.
Good question. Any other questions? All right, am I going too fast, too slow? Everything okay? All right, we'll keep going. All right, so strategic indicator three, defining the goals for teacher collaboration time, and this, I kind of talked a little bit about this already. And the PLC model, yeah, we, we identified that, you know, the, there's so much power that happens within our PLC around planning data, using data to drive instructional decisions and, and teacher professional learning, how they're learning from each other. COVID nineteen really brought to the surface for our teachers. We heard a lot of this in the feedback that I never collaborated, I never felt the, the, the value of collaboration in toy learning. And so I think it has really helped teachers kind of see the benefit because they depended on each other during that time to deliver instruction, and that was really powerful. And so we also know that we have some work to do to, to know how to get better at this. And so we, we definitely want to continue to do that. We developed a system-wide model. And it's called our PLC progression, and it's all about growth and how we get to effective PLCs, and it really calls out those important things that our teachers need and can do in order to better address the learning needs of our kids. Our focus this next year is that implementation of it and building coherence across the district with our teachers and our principals around that model, making sure that our effectiveness aligns, that we have a way to measure that that PLC impact is, is impacting student achievement. With our focus on equity, that's going to be a high priority for us as we look at our student groups that are not performing on track. Why is that? And how are our PLCs addressing that in their, their planning for instruction? And then the, the whole focus with our PLCs and diagnosing and planning to address unfinished learning, that kind of ties right into that equity piece. Some of the things that were impacted is, you know, we usually get a third kind of dip with MAP, of course, for data collection to kind of see the impact of their instruction. And also in SCAS, obviously, that's, that's data that, that also informs kind of where we're at as well. So we're, we're going to have to be creative with, you know, at the beginning of the year, how we really figure out where kids are and what that looks like to support them. So any other questions about that?
I, I have a question about planning with an equity lens. I think that's admirable. It's going to be part of the PLCs. How will you monitor that? How will you review that? Since equity is such an important part of what we're going to do, how you can hold people accountable for that, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, and well, a part of our, part of our progression with it, we have a rubric, actually, that can help us kind of assess where teachers are in that implementation, but it's also going to be in our habits of planning document. So as we roll out curriculum instruction and assessment, the habits of planning is really looking at, we're going to have to put in some key questions for teachers to think about in their planning to help capture that, because sometimes they don't know what they're, what they're looking at. But we're getting to the student level and saying, who are our kids that are not on track? And we need to get to a root cause. And so they'll have data of those students from the very beginning, and we'll be able to see, you know, that student growth along the way. So as we start to implement those plans. But there, there is going to be, it's going to be frequent conversations. It's going to have to, our principals are, obviously, we're going to be working with them to help them lead the way in our instructional coaches as well, but that data piece is going to be pretty important for us to monitor that implementation. Great question, Dr. Burris.
Thank you.
And the last one from my end for this objective is developing robust leadership development system for principals. There's so much that really happened this year with our principals, and we had a strong focus on equity, chronic attendance, and, and just again, getting into how do I know that good instruction is happening in classrooms? And how do I provide feedback to teachers that changes practice? And so that was really our focus throughout the year. We designed our principal meetings a little bit differently where we had actual sessions and principals could choose. And, and we were K-12. Sometimes we've divided into an elementary and secondary approach, and they wanted to be together because they learned so much from each other. And that we had sessions where they could choose focused on some really specific and focused content. We had a common, everybody had PLCs, we had training throughout, throughout the year, but when it came down to, you know, attendance and that leads to equity. So who are our kids that are attending, not attending, and why? What do we need to put into place to help support them? And then, of course, through, through COVID nineteen, the engagement data was really big. And so working with our principals on how to use that data, how to read that data, and then how to think about addressing that the, those needs come fall of twenty twenty. So program evaluation was also implemented. Dr. Doll is really instrumental in helping us understand how do we evaluate the programs for impact. And he will share a little bit more about that later, but he shared more, shared something about that in the, in the past, but we'll, we'll have more information about that. But he did excellent job just kind of developing that, that process, but leading the way with some examples of, hey, here's, here's a, here's our math, our new math, orgo math. Hey, here's, here's a, here's our math, our new math, orgo math, we're implementing, how do we know it works? And just getting digging deep into those classroom observations, gathering some data to say what, what is the impact? And it did drive some additional professional learning. There are principals that just said, I'm going to call that consultant back in because here's where we're struggling and I want to know how to. How to help my teachers with this. And so it did drive some additional decisions that our principals were making. And of course, our focus going in with our principals is, is continuing to, to lead. You know, we think about, you know, our environment, the way it is, you know, how do we get that? How do, how do we behave in an anti racist environment? How do we, how do we look for those inequities and address them and have the confidence and the skill sets? To do that in a way that continues to move us towards those goals. And so that's going to be some focused professional learning along with. That continued implementation of the instructional leadership. We are designing a different model for them. We're going to work in cohorts. This year we're maximizing our demonstration schools for, for leaders, leadership. And then with the work at the high school with David Holden. And we're kind of doing a trainer, trainer models where we'll have principals actually leading some professional learning throughout the year in cycles with some really specific. And intentional outcomes that they want to achieve throughout the year. Sprint coaching is an example of that, like what does sprint coaching look like? And how does it get me to changing teacher practice? And then action boards, how do we get those quick goals set? And then monitor the implementation of those goals and be able to shout out to our teachers that look where we're at, we're making progress. So we're kind of excited about, about that work. And the impact was this summer, we, we did have a big three day training plan with PLC facilitator training. And you know, that implementation of curriculum, we, we did have to kind of put some of those, some of those things on hold. But moving forward, we feel really good about the direction that we're headed. So that was strategic indicator four. Any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, objective two. Ensure that learning is enabled through safe, comfortable and welcoming environments. And strategic initiative number one, standardized approaches to discipline and behavior related issues within and across schools. This has been when I have my list of COVID positives. And because of the emphasis on social emotional learning and really supporting relationships when students return to school. This has really provided some emphasis and the need to move our behavior supports framework forward. So in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we did have a draft. Positive support framework that we presented to the board's retreat. This will go to our climate team on July thirteenth and fourteenth. For any updates, revisions, and also they will dig deeper into the protocols for each one of the pillars. So that is moving forward. Attendance campaign, Dr. Doll's great data analysis did show that what we had implemented with attend today, achieve tomorrow. Made a difference in that just all of the focus on attendance with everybody on board and not just social workers. Really made a difference to get kids to school. Develop a plan at the high school to support intervention strategies with the central Nebraska council hall, council on alcohol addiction. We had done research and had a committee together to talk about testing for drug and alcohol. And, and we decided that we really needed to focus in on awareness, intervention and support. And so we have been working with CNCA to put together, when a kid is identified with the drug, drug or alcohol. Issue that they would pull together some counseling that would involve the student and the family. As well as the plans we already have in place at senior high to support students. So that it's not just your cut, you're out. And so that looks promising. And again, will we keep that planning going and look forward to bring it, to the board? And there would be some funding costs there. We completed our rude mean bullying definition. And Ten Campbell, one of our counselors was really instrumental in putting this together. And it is part of the positive support framework. We implemented crisis post event communication of terroristic threats. And there was always this, well, should we tell everybody or not? And then we knew that we'd get out of the newspaper. And so we just came to the decision that we would communicate whenever there was a threat. And then let students and staff and parents know how that was dealt with. Then work with community agencies to support behavioral health issues in schools. And we have an annual behavioral health summit where we bring in outside agencies who support students with behavioral health issues. And it's been well attended and we have had some great discussion. And we'll continue to have that meeting and plus move initiatives identified for the group forward. So when we look for the focus of twenty 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 one. And we have three principals that have, are just on fire to get our positive supports framework going. And Mr. Bishop, Mr. Ekerman and Mr. Person Perry are leading this group forward. And have some just great ideas and really spelling out what needs to be in place. And as we start school in August to support positive supports. The attendance plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, this is really focused around COVID. In making sure students have options, but also that we will hold students accountable to be engaged in online learning. Or be engaged in onsite instruction. Drug and alcohol intervention strategies with community partners, again, will continue that. Working relationship with CNCA. Then develop a media campaign for rude, mean and bullying. There's quite a bit out there and we just want to work with Jack to get posters of. And to share with parents what that definition is and how they can report it, how students can report it. So that'll all be part of the media campaign. Formalized crisis post event communication. Jack and I have been to several trainings and have protocols that we pull from. But there's nothing really formalized that when this happens, we go to this protocol. And, and Jack and I just kind of know what to do, but we really want to put that into a formalized document. Formalized plan to support behavioral health agencies and providing support in schools. We have more and more of our agencies who are able to bill Medicaid, to bill, you know, families. But they can provide those services in our schools. Space is always an issue, but our principals have been awesome about finding space for our behavioral health outside professionals to come in and provide. Support to students. The community schools model at Lincoln has been awesome in supporting this and they keep that moving forward. We also have a partnership with Heartland Health. And we've been talking about a mobile clinic. And so with COVID dollars, they've been talking about how could we establish? Like a mobile trailer that would go to the different schools and they could set up for screenings for behavioral health support. But that's an area that we're communicating on. And then implement panorama in grades third through 12th and we are ready to move that forward. I've been attending a couple of webinars just this week on all of the things that panorama has added to support. COVID issues and we're really looking forward to that. We have building reps in each of our buildings who will be trained in implementation of panorama. And then most importantly, how to interpret the data. And then we talk about COVID impact. We had planned on sitting six teams to restorative practices training, which is a very big part of our positive sports framework. But that was all canceled, but we are working to get that rescheduled again. They have that training starting in October and again, that will depend on whether we can travel or not. Climate team meeting to work on positive sports framework. We had to cancel three different meetings and so are, and we last met in February, so we'll meet in July. And that really slowed down the progress, but again, with the three leaders pushing that forward, I think we'll make good growth. Then e-learning attendance monitoring, I've launched Nebraska and Corey's been doing some excellent work with, with synergy. To help us be able to track engagement. So that's going to be very important moving forward. And then approval of drug intervention strategies with funding to support. And we just, we had to cancel so many meetings and just didn't get a chance to move that forward. So we hope to be able to do that in twenty 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 one. So that is it for strategic initiative number one, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, I'm just going to go ahead and pick up on strategic initiative number two. Ensuring consistent levels of quality among school facilities. And so we did spend some time looking at the, the different models that are out there. And fairly quickly, the American Society of Civil Engineers model. Called Facilities Condition Index was something that just kind of reappeared in all the literature, so to speak. And at first I was a little skeptical about it because it seemed like there was maybe some variability. That you could kind of control the, the results, but you know, as long as you're using as credible information as you have. I think you get really good analysis and really kind of in a short description. It, it in essence says, take the value of your building as it is today. If you had to replace or rebuild in today's dollars, that building based on the square foot and what it's, how it's configured. And compare like the, basically the project list that we have for each building. So the unfunded or un, uncompleted project list for that building. And basically you get a percentage, right? And so anything below five percent is considered good, you know, that it happens, you know, there's things and takes a while to get them done. So as long as it stays below five percent, it's basically the green light. If you want to think about a stoplight type scenario, anything above five percent, up to 10% is kind of the yellow caution. Hey, maybe you're, maybe you're delaying some things you really need to get on top of. Anything over 10%, it's definitely a red. You need to spend some time analyzing the pieces and parts that make up that building and figure out. What you can do to address those issues sooner than later. So it, it is a good model. And the neat thing is, as you know, we just agreed to work with a company called Amerisco. For really tracking our work orders and the capital assets. And so it's built in their model. And so that's just another layer of what they bring to the table. So I'm very excited about that and working with Amerisco to identify all those things. Mainly because it's going to give us that, that thing that we've always kind of done in the background with spreadsheets. You know, we, we did our best with what that tool provided. But then this really lets us understand, like for example, the roofs, all the roofs across the district. And what do we need to do and where? So we can spend our money as wisely, so the data driven decision making on those type of things. And so I guess along with that, one of the other objectives in this initiative is, you know, just standardizing our security system. And we have done that, a visual on is the name of the company that we use their equipment. We have just been working on that for well over a decade. I think the first project we did was a federal grant through, I think they actually call it the COPS grant. And it was for some equipment and we put that in and we've just been at it ever since. And so visual on is our new standard. And they have everything from the kind of the old analog system up to the high definition. And so we're kind of, we have pieces and parts across the district. Just because there's so much of it that you can't replace everything to the latest and greatest, but that's definitely the standard. And it's everywhere basically. So, and then really the facilities master planning, we, I don't know, you probably can't see this, but I'm going to try holding it up. We, we went about doing some research and found the essential guide to school facility planning. The nice thing is it's a strategic process. And so we're using that as an outline and it's kind of like, why reinvent the wheel? Let's do what we know works and that's based on, you know, years of experience by people that do it. And so we engaged with Canon Musburger and Associates to be our kind of lead on putting the data together. And so we've done a lot of work this year to get all the floor plans and everything that. A capacity analysis has been completed for the entire district, for all the buildings. I think you've seen a preliminary of that, but that work's done. And so very excited with what we got done this last year. Looking into, you know, really our focus for next year is to. Do the town hall meetings to both internal and external, to get people's feedback, present the information we have. And ask them, you know, what is the hopes and dreams for the facilities in Grand Island Public Schools? And then like I mentioned, just working with Amerisco, fully implementing that software package. That's a web based facilities package that really is going to, like I said, allow that data driven decision making. And then, you know, as you know, we were planning to have a town hall meeting in April out at College Park with the facilities. And of course with COVID nineteen, that just stopped in its tracks. And so we'll pick that back up. You know, one of the things that's nice about this process is that, and working with Canon is those. We have poster boards for every single building now that show all the in detail on the same basis. You know, the square footage, whether it's classroom space, common space, back of the house kind of thing. And, and give some statistics about square foot and all these different things that are important for somebody to look at and kind of understand. And you know, those can be updated. If we do anything to modify the building, we can update those and have those ready. And if it, if nothing's happened to the building, it can stay the same and we have a data, a set point as we go into the future. So I'm very excited about that. I, I'm looking forward to getting both internal stakeholders to GIPS and external stakeholders feedback on that. So I hope at some point we get to that stage. And so really those things are kind of been delayed with the COVID. I suppose funding then, you know, is a continual problem if we're going to invest these large dollar amounts in facilities. We have to have a way to pay for them at this point. It would require a referendum to do much of anything, given our current state of affairs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up. We're going to move into objective three on personalized and I just want to be mindful of the time. We do want to be able to get through all eight objectives. So just making sure we're kind of monitoring here. Objective three. Jennifer, you're going to talk about success mentors or someone else?
Okay, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, we're going to just cover that in objective eight.
Yeah, I, I'll just talk about it. I planned on talking about it further on.
Okay. Okay, so Dr. Jackson, let's just move forward, talking about early childhood. We're going to swing back and we'll talk about it when, once we get to Jennifer's section on the other two.
Okay, so we're on strategic, objective three, strategic initiative four. You need to move forward with the slide. Okay, so accomplished in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And we expanded early childhood education, high quality programs. And we, and this is another COVID positive. With six pence and our rooted relationships and communities for kids. We were able to really engage with our daycare providers and support them as they were considered essential workers. And continue to work and support families through the whole pandemic to this point. And again, so working with community childcare providers has been a real positive and increased involvement. So our focus for twenty 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 one is to implement the early childhood education classrooms at Howard. We are so excited about having two full day classrooms at Howard. And then plan for two classrooms at the O'Connor Learning Center. And we would are just kind of tossing all kinds of things around. But one of the discussions we've had with YWCA, YMCA, possibly daycare partners in Grand Island. But the two classrooms in the early learning center could possibly be to support daycare providers. And maybe have a seven to seven daycare program. And possibly having first come, first served would be our staff. And that would be a huge recruiting tool. So those are, are just really still in very early discussion stages, but we are looking at how to use that space. Implement new early childhood framework curriculum resources. And the framework is just beautiful, thanks to Jack and our graphics and just everything is in one spot now. And then our curriculum. Amy Richards, our critical childhood director. Career Childhood Director, has really worked to identify tools of the mind which you all heard from in the June board meeting. The Tools of the Mind curriculum is just going to be a big game changer for us at the Early Childhood Center. And the climate and culture at the Early Childhood Education Programs are just very inclusive and supportive. So we're really proud of that. COVID impact, again, it was a positive and we increased connections with community childcare providers. And then the Nebraska Children's Families Foundation has been very positive about all the work we've done and have secured extra funding so that we can support all of the daycare and early childhood education providers in Grand Island. So we really appreciated that. And then all this keep moving here. Strategic Initiative Five, Community Services Provide Services at the Neighborhood School. And that was the, you know, we transportation is so expensive to get kids to another spot for after-school activities. And so we really focused in on finding funds. Dinner first been working very hard to get extra funds to provide those community services at the school. So we'll continue to do that. Also, working as part of the Hall County Transportation Plan, and it looks very promising to move us forward into having some city transportation that I believe GIPS can be a part of. And then strategic condition six, increase opportunities and supports for new GIPS students. The accomplished transition opportunities, this has been a big part of the positive support framework that we identify transitioning to kindergarten, transitioning to sixth grade and transitioning to ninth. And Dr. Palmer and her team established the kindergarten ready website, which is very helpful to parents. This is Worthington with the Jump Start Six has been an excellent opportunity for fifth graders going to sixth. And then the gear-up program for eighth graders going into freshman has been a great start for freshmen. And then moving forward, we'd like to create a new family induction protocol. Some of our schools have really spelled out protocols on how to support new families. But we want to get that set district-wide and data collection and then interviews and surveys of new families to see how we can continue to improve. So those are strategic initiative four, five, and six.
Dr. Dexter, I just have a quick question. So on the back to the early childhood under the second bullet under the focus for 2021, when you say plan for two classrooms at the O'Connor Learning Center. So is that going to happen before all the construction is done? Or is that, that's referencing once all the reconstruction is done and then we would have those rooms?
The the plan is to start the planning of how we can use those two rooms.
But when Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Dexter, I have a question and maybe, maybe I've been sleeping for a few years here. But I read about the COVID impact, about new family induction protocol, collect data on a number of new families. Do we still have a newcomers office newcomers program?
We do. At the, and they're still located Central District Health Department. And so, but really working to really beef that up on how we support them and even with cultural brokers. So we have, you know, they mainly serve kids coming from out of the country. So how do we connect them with families to get them engaged in the community?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we ready for objective four?
All right, let's do it. All right. So this has a lot, but I'm going to try to just focus because a lot of it's on around the academies at Grand Island Senior High. So this is really about powering students to take ownership of their learning and have skills in critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity through rigorous academic instruction, real-world experiences. Of course, you all know, we launched first year of our academies, all of our academies this year. That was a huge celebration amongst the challenges of mold at the beginning and COVID-19 at the end. There was so much that was accomplished throughout this year. And we received, obviously, we received some model academy status recognition for our freshman academy and also our CTE or Technical Sciences pathways. And so that was pretty exciting. And they continue to stay focused on the graduate profile throughout. So just the connections with our advisory teams. Advisory boards for each of the academies has been pretty exciting and powerful and our community has been so supportive. Attending our meetings, supporting and being a part of that curriculum development that has been really very exciting as far as what it's produced for our kids and experiences. So we were able to increase our opportunities for students with we had the their internships, their apprenticeships, and then of course, our dual credit courses. And so we're so much has been done that, in addition to what we actually had planned in the strategic initiatives to accomplish, and we've actually gone beyond that and continued to to add more. So going into this next fall, our focus is that continued work on the the Career Academy, NCAC National Career Academy Coalition, and working towards those standards and becoming really a model academy across the nation at Grand Island Public Schools or Grand Island Senior High. Our principals are really involved at that level. And they continue to build coherence around how do we make sure that we're providing these opportunities for our students to ensure that they are college, career and life enrolled ready when they leave Grand Island Senior High. And one of the, moving forward this next year, we're going to be launching professional learning, personalized learning plans. Kids are going to be developing digital profiles starting as a freshman. And we know that that's going to give our kids an advantage as they document their experiences. The project-based learning pieces that they do, their community service pieces. It'll it'll house all their interviews and and opportunities that they have out in our community. And that's really going to give them a leg up, an advantage as they go into applying for scholarships, colleges and jobs in the future. So we're pretty excited about that. And then we'll be building backwards from senior high to the kindergarten level, thinking about the features, what that looks like if we start in kindergarten. And so that it follows them all the way through school. So some planning will be developed around that. And then, of course, Cambridge was affected this year. We really wanted to implement our Cambridge freshman in our freshman academy for ELA and social studies. And it really takes some in-person training for our teachers to make that happen. And we had that planned in the spring so that they would have the summer to work through that curriculum and be prepared for the fall. We didn't feel like that we could put our teachers through that and really do an advantage to kids and be prepared to do it. So we want to set them up for success. So we have a plan this fall, though we've actually got some dates on the calendar to start that professional learning so that they can work through the training this fall, prepare their curriculum through the spring and summer, and then they'll they'll be ready to go in 2021. And Cambridge has been really good working with us, understanding our position and have been very supportive. So we look forward to introducing that. The other thing is that's big with our academies is the capstone projects. And we've had teams working this summer making sure that all the capstone projects are developed for each of the pathway courses of each of the academies. So that we have a, you know, projects for our students that have to be completed to meet those graduation requirements for their pathways. And they're pretty, they're pretty well-written and they really focus on input from our partnerships in the community. And so really excited about using those to help guide, not only from the beginning of our freshman, but actually from kindergarten, thinking about those outcomes that we want for our students and how do we make sure everybody is aware that that's where we're headed with our students? And what we want them to graduate with when it comes to those skills to be college, career, life, enrolled ready. And so we'll be piloting those capstone projects and revising those throughout this next, through this next year. So we're kind of excited about that. So that that's really kind of an overview of the what's happening at the high school. Do you want me to go in depth about any specific information on the high school accomplishments with academies?
Dr. Palmer, I'll just add for the Board of Education, this will be our first year putting out somewhat of an annual update about the academies. And so Jack has worked with the high school to produce a very, very impressive booklet. It will be hitting your mailbox on July 1. And so you'll be able to see even some of the demographics of the students of each academy, the advisory board members, their contributions, a lot of testimonies and quotes, as well as the number of certifications and so forth that were earned by our students. And we really hope that this will be an annual event as we continue to grow the academies, but also just our accountability back to our community to give them just a deeper insight of the progress that we're making at the academies of Grand Island Senior High School. So huge kudos to the administration up there, working along with our folks here. It is still very much an exciting program that's really helping our students to thrive.
Thank you, Dr. Gerber. And a ton of momentum. Our kids that are involved in it now, I mean, they go out and they talk about it. And that that's the best part about it is hearing the the student testimonials of of how they see themselves in their academies and how they're taking ownership. Some of them are even putting it on their signatures when they sign their names. So if they send you an email, a lot of times you'll know what academy those students are in because they're putting it on there. So they're very proud and and that's the culture that they've built up at Senior High. And we're pretty pretty proud of that team and all the work the teachers have done to to support it. So moving on to Strategic Indicator Four, Leveraging Technology to provide students with flexible personal learning. Well, we jumped right in this spring. We really were doing some focus work at the high school with David Holden. We had a team of teachers, a cohort of teachers that were involved in blended learning and were piloting some things this last fall, and really pushed that to all teachers, actually piloting and implementing when we went into e-learning. And so we had some 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 real push to get that experience and for teachers to use it, which was it was really good. A teacher saw the benefits of it and man, they dug in and learned, took that on and really proud of all the work that they did to stay connected with our students through that platform. We did realize some things, though. We've got multiple different platforms that teachers are using that was really hard for some kids to navigate between Canvas and Google Classroom and maybe some other things that teachers were using. And so we know we've got to get to one common platform that is familiar to our students, but also will help them be an advantage as they go into the college setting as well to make it easy for their transition. And so that that's what we're working on right now is identifying Canvas as our common platform to deliver instruction, but also to have onboarding our our students and our parents onto what that looks like. So what does that mean to our parents? How can they support their children? What does that mean for our kids to be highly engaged in this type of environment? And what are those rules of engagement in order for us to really know that they are learning and gaining the knowledge and skills that they need to be successful? So there's a lot of training that's going to be focused around that coming this next, coming in August. The virtual pathway, we'd started a pilot with that and and we're going to be expanding that, obviously, as part of a need to support students going into this next year. And so, you know, we look forward to expanding that and getting more coherence around what that looks like and how we measure student success in that pathway. And we want them all to be on track to graduate. And so that's going to be another area where we continue to focus. And Strategic Indicator Five, as we look in, look at coaching our students and informing them about the academies that was really accomplished, we kind of worked through that, but we know we've got some refinements to do. And so we're looking at doing some virtual tours. We got creative. Like, how do we make sure people know and understand what our academies really are? We need to promote and provide people access to seeing and envisioning what that looks like. So we're going to start with some development of this next year, some virtual tours of our pathways. And these can be used as educational marketing guidance for freshmen as well as parents to help them better understand what it is their students will experience at Grand Island Senior High. And so that was delayed just a little bit. We had a plan to get that started this spring, but we'll be starting that again this fall. And then, of course, our onboarding of new businesses, we're not stopping. Constantly getting connected with different businesses in our community that want to be a part of this. And so we continue to work with building that capacity to provide more opportunities, experiences to our kids in a lot of different different businesses and different pathways. And we have to also did some refinement of our career and college fairs. We had huge success with that this year. And we were going to try something different with kind of a reverse hiring fair where where businesses were coming into Grand Island Senior High and they were interviewing kids for jobs and that was disrupted a little bit, but from COVID-19. So we postponed that, but we're not giving up on it and we'll continue to pursue that this next year. We are really proud of the expanded courses that we were able to accomplish with Wayne State. And of course, the plan and that all students have access now to dual credit courses without cost to our students. And so any student, we're encourage all of our students, obviously, as part of our graduate profile, to take those dual credit courses and earn some college credit while they're in school at no cost to them, putting them at an advantage in the future to pursue post-secondary education. So we look forward to continuing that work. One thing that that did disrupt is we know we we have to help a lot of our kids need a lot of help with this. They need a lot of help with, how do I register? What does this look like? And so we had a plan for May where our teachers were really going to do that in as part of their in-class supports for students. And because of COVID-19, we were able to have that personal connection to help kids get registered. So we're working on a summer plan where we're inviting kids in and helping them make sure that they're getting registered for those courses. So that's not going to be a barrier. It's just we got to rethink how that looks. And then on Strategic Indicator Eight, increasing the gifted talented dual credit. And we increased our dual credit courses to 69 from 47 and AP courses to 17 from 14. And we're not going to stop there. We continue to try to expand those courses. We did add nine AP dual credit courses, which we had not had in the past. So it's exciting to be able to have, for students to have a choice that if they're taking an AP course, that they have an opportunity to both take it for AP credit or they can take it as a dual credit course as an elective for college. We leverage for gifted specialists this year. We've got some data that we'll bring back to at a future Board of Education meeting and give you an update on the data from the the four gifted specialists and the work that they did this last year at the elementary level. We did, part of our plan was to continue to expand that program and build that capacity. But with our current situation, we couldn't prioritize that this year. So so we're, you know, we're always going to be innovative and thinking about what was it that we noticed? Were there gaps in services and supports for students around gifted and talented programming? And if, you know, using what we have and the knowledge that we have, how do we, how do we address those gaps and make sure that all students have that access is going to be really important this next year. So that is our plan moving forward. I will open it up to any questions.
Dr. Palmer, I have several. Under Strategic Initiative One, would you refresh my memory as to what gain the acronym stands for, please?
Yes. And Dr. Dahl, do you want to, because Dr. Dahl's very
That is, and that'll come up in my part of the presentation, but gain is growth, achieve, innovate, navigate. And those are four skills that we want every student to be familiar with and to embed in their learning experience.
And just a reminder, this is, we implemented that during COVID-19 because we really knew that we wanted to figure out why some students were not engaged. And so Dr. Dahl really helped us develop that plan of how do we gather that data? And moving forward, it's how do we use that data now going into fall? We know who those kids are. And we're going to be working on developing some specific and intentional plans around for those students to address engage, address their engagement in school.
And then the Cambridge curriculum is not replacing AP. It is an expansion of offerings. Isn't that correct?
Well, actually, it's only for freshmen. And and that was to build because the the course itself is pretty rigorous and it's helping build the capacity for our our hope, our goal, what we want to assess is if if students having access to Cambridge actually increases their, the number of students that have access to those AP courses in the future.
And then under the gifted program, Strategic Initiative Eight, we haven't forgot about the middle school, have we?
Oh, no.
You would know I'd asked that question.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. And Cara Krews has been awesome. And she's working with all K-12 around their gifted programming. And so it's always looking at, I mean, she's got some numbers, the number of students that are engaged in the programming there. Our integration specialists are much more involved at the middle school level with supporting our students for their gifted education at that point. Good questions. Any others?
All right, thank you.
On Objective Five, Strategic Initiative One, I know we're running short on time. So I'll just remind the board members that when we started this strategic plan, our IT department did a tremendous job of building dashboards for our 11 success major, measures, as well as our progress indicators. And we continue to use those, but we also know things change. We've added some additional data that we look at. Dr. Dahl will share some on gain today. We really dug into attendance data in a different way. We really dug into attendance data in a different way. So we continue to track the strategic plan. We also use Microsoft projects for our individual department tasks.
So agreeing, I want to be mindful of our time. So strategic indicators two and three are kind of linked together in terms of creating dashboards that are usable at the classroom, school and district levels. And then also using that same work to help teachers with their school improvement planning and progress monitoring of those school improvement plans. So I just wanted to highlight some features of the work that I did through the year at multiple times with principals, but then as well giving insight to district teams and district leaders in terms of NSCAS, at the beginning of the year, working with NSCAS results and demographic and class and cohort breakdowns. And then throughout the two administrations of the MAP testing, again, always looking for what are the trends from the data? What are students who are not able to engage at the same rates of others? And a wonderful thing happened when we received the winner map results. I connected that to who the teachers were teaching each of the classes and, and made the, made the step that we could identify high-growth teachers and also teachers that may be lagging in growth with student, student results so that we could help schools support them. So again, being mindful of time, I just want to additionally say, as Dr. Dexter mentioned and Dr. and Ms. Worthington, the full year focus on attendance and chronic absenteeism really enabled a continued bringing, bringing that up during principal meetings each month and then also just working through principals with their data. And such a wonderful thing happened in the years. We saw chronic absenteeism go down in a number of schools and the attendance rate overall improve. So those are thing, items from Strategic Indicator Two and Three. And I'll just pause and ask if there are any questions. Something that I left out of Strategic Indicator Three had to do with eighth grade math and algebra. We really spent some time using our equity lens, asking who's taking these courses and what's happening with the results. In other words, we looked at the current seniors who have, have successfully completed Grand Island Public Schools. And we looked, how, how did their eighth grade math experience look? And what were their educational outcomes during the resulting four years of high school? So we kind of linked those things together and use that as a planning time for helping the cohort of algebra students for this year's eighth graders, incoming eighth graders, that is. And that work was impacted by COVID. We, we had surveyed students and we planned to do more with that analysis, but we're going to continue that work in the new school year to make sure that we have an equity lens with our new cohort of algebra math students. So I'm going to move to Strategic Indicator Number Four and kind of shift my focus towards work that was done with GISH and preparing the GISH online virtual work that was being done on a smaller scale, both with success and, and skills academies. But really, we spent the year with them, asking how come some of the students that aren't graduating because of jobs or because of different family things? How come we're not able to help create more ways for, for them to complete their education? In other words, not necessarily the eight to three model. So that led to, by the turn of the year, more students being enrolled in GISH online. And we didn't expect that COVID would happen and ramp that, ramp that up quite a bit. But we're so grateful for that work starting off early. I've also focused my work on two other areas. The AQuest reports, which the state has pressed a pause on, but the data we haven't pressed a pause on. In other words, we've still been looking at all of the target areas of AQuest because we want to be ready for next year. And we really are going to need to, as we're looking to close learning gaps, prepare students for NSCAS this coming year and working out all those timelines as our, our team works with the state on that. And finally, it would, I'd be remiss to not spend so much more time on program evaluation, but I have, I have only a minute. So I want to just respect the time, but say I've had a chance to share with BOE, the Board of Education Committee of the deeper work of the six program evaluations. I've also recently been working with DMG as well as some outside stakeholders from Harvard that I'm connected with in program evaluation to connect our program evaluations with academic return on investment because we really need to be able to answer the question, are these helping or not? So each of the program evaluations currently underway are going to be implemented with an academic return on investment statistic. So we have data to compare. That will be a work in the fall. And I plan to share that on an every other month basis with BOE committee until there's a different time and space for program evaluations to be regularly shared. But I at least want to have a place to give a report out on a regular basis to the Board of Education. Happy to take questions on those two strategic indicators. And I'll just close by saying that a lot of my work has, has really resulted from a combination of active listening to asking, what is the data saying? Are we listening to that? Do, and to Dr. Rose's point that I learned at the beginning of the year, not only how are we going to evaluate something, but how are we going to know if it's better once we've, once we've done that? So I've really spent the year looking at data and looking at it again and again, and then trying to ensure the highest quality for the data that we get. So in other words, not over surveying, but rather a high level of acuity for, for what we analyze and, and decisions we can make from it. And I've really just, such an awesome team here. I am thankful for the supports from all the leaders in this call that I lean on regularly for help. With that, if there's not another question, I'll, I'll move to Objective Six. I'll be back later. I think this is Virgil.
Thank you. So Objective Six, Strategic Initiative, Central Office will provide transparent differentiated supports, principals, teachers to help them achieve school improvement goals. And Strategic Initiative One, under that is align financial resources to students' school needs and district priorities. And so, you know, we have definitely been working on the Government Finance Officers Association's Best Practice in school district budgeting. Dr. Palmer, Mr. Phillips and myself went to Chicago to attend a two-day workshop and brought back a great wealth of information and resources. One of the key things that occurred this year that really had never occurred prior is one-to-one face-to-face budget meetings during the mid-year, really almost right before COVID hit in the January, February timeframe. End of February is technically halfway through our fiscal year. And so myself and one of the assistants in the business office, we met one-on-one with billing principals. We really tried to go out to their buildings and meet with them and talk to them. We introduced for the first time in the past, the billing principals that had only been responsible for, you know, really what we call it, a operational billing budget where they're, they're delivering the curriculum and they have some resources are given to them through. We used to use something called the Special Needs Index to allocate resources. We hope to bring that back, but you know, they didn't ever see staff. And as you well know, staff and the cost of benefits are about eighty percent of everything we do. And so it's really important that we start to have that dialogue with billing principals so they know and understand their staffing. So that, for the first time ever, we presented that information to them and then kind of set the stage for additional growth and processing as we move forward. And so obviously, the work that we've been doing with the District Management Council on staffing study and the academic return on investment is definitely something that we want to continue. I think Wayne has some information on that moving forward. And then really the COVID impact, obviously, as we go into budget season here, we're not going to be able to have, you know, face-to-face in-building meetings, at least not at this point. And so it just kind of makes that process and that growth there a little harder, but we're going to work through it and make it happen. So, and then Initiative Two, the ESSA Accounting Code piece is a hundred percent implemented. The state of Nebraska is poised, I believe, maybe even before the end of the month, so the next week, to release the per pupil spending by building calculations that they have done. And so we're interested to see how that all works. Because as you know, the big push was to, you know, really get all the expenditures coded down for the building level. We've always coded personnel down that way, but the non-personnel costs of other twenty percent that we spend, and you know, it's a large measure, really never got coded out to the building. It was kind of always district-wide, district-wide. Well, now we're coding it out so we can really get that understanding of how we're spending our money. And it's just another data point to help us understand, you know, are we spending our money where the needs are most? So it's part of that whole equity lens that we're trying to adopt. And so I'm excited to have a good credible information, first year baseline. We'll see what it says and move on from there. So delayed the town hall. We were supposed to have a town hall meeting on the budget, try to engage people. You know, the budget's one of those things that kind of people's eyes gloss over. But I think it's really important to reach out and make sure that we engage the community to get their input on, you know, how we're spending the money, tell the story, tell the story, tell the story. And even if they don't respond in large numbers, you know, at least we've had that dialogue to try to help folks understand how, you know, really we're spending a hundred and seventeen million dollars in the general fund this year to educate kids and how we spend that. And so we have a duty to have that transparency. So that will continue hopefully post-COVID where we actually can have a town hall meeting face-to-face. So I would conclude my comments with that.
Strategic Initiative Three, Support Schools and Improving School Performance. You, in the interest of time, I know we have thirty minutes devoted a little bit later in the agenda to next steps on the staffing study and staffing analysis. So I'll just mention here, Chris, last board meeting, you received the completed staffing analysis along with some of their recommendations. And we'll talk about next steps, timelines and things like that a little bit later in the agenda. So unless there's specific questions right now, I'll yield the microphone.
We're having a hard time hearing. Where I am.
I'll get a little closer. Is that better?
Better.
So I was just referencing that we have shared with the board, the staffing study and recommendations from DMG. We've got thirty minutes or so on the agenda to talk about next steps and some recommendations for moving forward with that. So unless there are specific questions right now, I'll go into more detail a little bit later.
Okay, Objective Seven, Equity is not new to Grand Island Public Schools and it's not even new to this strategic plan. We've been talking and working on equity for a number of years. And it's not just unique to this objective. You've already heard today, several other departments are working on equity. But this is the one where we say that GIPS will cultivate an equitable district in which all individuals are valued. And when we look at Strategic Initiative One, what you see on the screen is accurate. I apologize that the, what's in your booklet got pulled from an earlier version when we were using cultural proficiency. So we will update that because this document has so much good information that for archive purposes, I will fix that. But on your screen, it is accurate that we will evaluate the equitable building practices of pretty much our entire district. You can see those different departments and practices that are mentioned. And some of this has already started happening. L4L utilizes an equity lens when identifying new curriculum. You've already heard from Virgil with the GFOA and the work they do in equity. So a lot of this is already happening. For the ones that maybe there's not a formal process already in place, that will be the work of 2021 to divide, to develop a process to evaluate the other systems. And I'll talk a little bit more when we talk about the committee, about how that might work out. And then Strategic Initiative Two, this will be the second and hopefully last time that I will apologize again. This has the cultural proficiency wording in it. But this is where we talk about researching and implementing tools. One of the things the task force did this year, which I was really pleased with, is we spent quite a bit of time developing what we will use as our benchmark data to identify inequities. We identified eleven different things. There are things that we already track in our district. We were able to tie those to the different goals of the strategic plan or the student success measures of the strategic plan. We've also then, and initially we wanted to pick things that we were already tracking and were part of the strategic plan because that was the same time that we were implementing synergy. And our IT department was so involved in that, that we didn't want to ask them to look at additional data. But we've continued to expand. You already heard Dr. Dahl talked about looking at some algebra data in terms of equity. Strategic Initiative Three is on professional development. This year, Dr. Levas presented four sessions for staff. And then other professional developments certainly included equity. That's something I mentioned in a task force meeting yesterday. I think board members came back from a national conference several years ago and everything they'd heard about all of a sudden was equity. We went to that same fall to Administrator Days and NDE rolled out their equity framework. So these four sessions that Dr. Levas did is certainly not all that was done, but those were the four I pulled out for this one. And then for the next year, we'll develop and implement additional professional development. Things like implicit bias training is one of the things we're looking at. Strategic Initiative Four, Promote Cross-Cultural Learning and Understanding. One of the things, and you see some bullets in there, are things that we were considering. And I, I hope the board doesn't think that we'll do all these or there's not a chance we'll do anything else. Because I think these were just good practices at the time we are aware of. One of the things we added this year, thanks to Dr. Grover's encouragement through some of her Broad Institute work, we conducted empathy interviews with forty-nine staff, students and parents. We did some training for our task force members, so we would be comfortable doing that. And so we would all be pretty consistent in the way that we did those interviews and the way we tracked the information. And all of us shared, the first meeting when we rolled this out, some people were very excited about it. Some staff were a little overwhelmed. How are we going to work in these interviews with everything else? But it was such a positive experience to everyone doing them. And so we'll look at ways to continue that in the next year. Maybe it's empathy interviews with additional audiences or maybe it's some of these things you see on the screen, like the storytelling program. There is kind of a courageous conversation protocol that we should, we could use. So we'll definitely continue that. And as you know, we did the theming from the empathy interviews and that really played into what you'll see in the next part of the agenda with our equity work. Strategic Initiative Five, that's really about our advisory committee. That was the first thing that we developed way back when we started this. We did some of the big things we did this year, as I mentioned, was the benchmark data. We added some additional members as we could see, we were going in different directions and needed some additional expertise. And then they'll be bringing their work to the board in July. You've already seen it once, you'll see it again today. So the task force will continue to meet. I'm not sure if it'll be in exactly the same way because as we roll out some of these things, like remember in Strategic Initiative One, we listed out several different departments that were involved. Some of this work may move to specific departments or other efforts, but this task force will certainly stay in place to, to keep their eye on how things are going and to jump in where needed because, because this is going to change. Our work is going to change in equity from what we know now. And then Strategic Initiative Six, you see some notes from me and also from Mr. Stelk. This is just really the Grow Your Own program and we continue with Pathback. We've added a Don ESL endorsement that we have a cohort starting right now. We've working with Fort Hayes and Hastings College and sharing some staff. And then I think Mr. Stelk's notes give it a little bit more specific. We also just had a conversation as recently as yesterday, I believe, with you and Kay with some additional things they're wanting to do in Grand Island. So definitely continuing with that. Mr. Stelk, is there anything else you want to add or are there any questions on Objective Seven?
The only thing I guess I might add is, you know, as we've been working with some of the institutions on the parent-to-teacher program, we have had, for instance, Fort Hayes has been in and Hastings has been in and also met with groups of pairs that have an interest in, you know, we've collected the names of those people. So we'll be following up with them and, you know, one of the, it's one thing to have a program for people to go through and then it's another to say, how do we get more people into that program? So we'll be kind of monitoring how staff are responding to that. And if there are barriers or issues that are preventing them from getting started, you know, look for ways that the district might be able to support or encourage or help eliminate some of those barriers to attract more people into those programs.
Okay, we can move on to Objective Eight then. This is our, our kind of communication partnership type, type goal, regularly and deeply engage as partners in ensuring our student's success. Strategic Initiative One, there's a lot there on the screen. It's really about establishing those partnerships with businesses, governmental agencies to support our district goals and our students. It's really about establishing those partnerships with businesses, governmental agencies to support our district goals and our students. And you know, so much work was done the first couple of years of the strategic plan with the academies and the partnerships and the work that I kind of started, Nikki has taken it to a whole nother level. Dan Phillips with the higher ed partnership. So a lot has been done on the high school level. But there's also been a lot done on other levels of as well. Oh, and I guess the other thing accomplished, um, we have to track all these partnerships, especially with the academies. And we went back and forth between a couple of platforms that would work best. And we did decide on the work-based learning that you see listed there that Mr. Phillips is working to implement. You know, but at some of the other levels, um, as we looked at, you know, you saw earlier in objective three, a couple of items that had my name beside of the mentoring for students. We started the success mentors program. We have 12 buildings that signed on, started with eight, but as they talked among themselves and got so excited, it built to 12 with 152 students. And that's one of those things that other than maybe 90 minutes, we had to pay um, staff to come to training. Some staff, not all, some were already on contract. It's really a low, no cost program. And it's had incredible um, impact. Jefferson shared some data with us specifically to success mentors and how it impacted the students. And then as we think about our ELOs, so much of that, our expanded learning or extended learning opportunities, so much of that is due to partnerships. Our schools have very small budgets to do that. So um, we've continued to add more partners. Nebraska Children and Families is one that was mentioned earlier that I bring out. They've offered us three additional grants or or program areas for the upcoming year. So we continue to build those. And COVID has actually helped us in some positive ways with that. Robin mentioned earlier how we're working with H3C and the early childhood network. And COVID really helped businesses understand how important quality early childhood care is. We worked hard, Robin worked so hard when H3C struggled to keep it going. And because it's so important to GIPS and now they're on very, very firm ground. Um, so our focus for next year under that one is really identifying additional community school sites. We had planned to do that this year to share some information with principals that might be interested um, and then start next fall. We'll have to decide if we aren't able to really share that information until August, do we start another community school in January or do we wait till August? So we'll still be working for that. And then we had a couple of events we had to um, postpone because of COVID. So strategic initiative two, that's the opportunities for families to support their children. Um, we have, community schools is going very well. That's one way to support their children implemented or had a very successful second year. We also had that statewide family invading engagement center grant that brings parents into the buildings to really see what their students are doing and also to set goals for their families and get the support to achieve those goals. Some other things we did, you know, we, and part of it was COVID. We did a kindergarten ready website for families because we weren't able to bring those new kindergarten families in. Um, we implemented a district app this year and we did some materials or some kind of screen share, screencast type things online to help families know how to use that. So we're in when, when applicable, we're, we're doing that. But I think for next year, there needs to be a stronger focus on, and I'm responsible for that. What do we want across the entire district for all families to have access to? Because it's still a little bit hit and miss with certain buildings depending on, for example, community schools is only in one building. So really some level of family support and engagement district wide. Um, strategic initiative three refers to our communication plan. That has just continued to get more and more refined um, with these three years of the strategic plan. This last year, we identified seven priorities. We shared that with the PR committee and I believe brought it to board as well. And really looked at what our audience needs were. That's something that came out of our um, survey that parents want something different than staff wants. So we really tried to differentiate in that area. Our plan looked at board and superintendent engagement. Changing shoes was one thing that came out of that as well as social cues that we started with some of our board members. Academies was certainly a big part of the communication patient, patient plan. And then helping administrators with messaging. Our communication plan changed. We didn't get it all done to this year, certainly because of COVID. Our focus has changed to COVID. We, Jack communicates every Wednesday with staff. We were doing it every day for a while. So definitely our focus has changed. And then the strategic initiative four is around high-quality early childhood education. That's listed twice in our um, document and Dr. Dexter talked about that earlier. So unless people have additional questions about that, I think that's covered. So that takes us through objective eight, if there's any questions on that one. Dr. Grover, do you have anything you want to wrap up with the strategic plan or?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Yes, I'm, I'm unmuted uh, here. I was just trying to give enough the Zoom think time. Uh, so we've covered a lot. And so you kind of have the document in front of you of just kind of lists of just a few additional COVID-19 uh, concerns. Uh, again, finishing up year three, uh, we still very much have our dashboards that are active. Uh, and the team continues to enter that information. I believe for the uh, strategic initiatives of the progress indicators, as we kind of get a little bit more into fall, uh, we can think about uh, bringing that back. I would say again, I reported out about our percentages. Uh, we're somewhere between 70 and 80 uh, percent of the strategic plan complete on a five-year plan. Uh, I think that deserves a round of applause for our team members because the only thing that they did not do during COVID-19 were things that they were prohibited from doing. Uh, that COVID-19 did not allow them to do, but otherwise we continue uh, to push forward. So thank you all for all of that. And again, thank you to the Board of Education for your flexibility and your continued support. And we never have enough time for strategic plan. You can see we're already 30 minutes behind, but we're worth it. All right, so uh, let's see if we can make up some ground here. Uh, we want to try to move into two other areas and then we'll take a break. Uh, so let's try to uh, talk about this uh, equity a little bit more. And then we'll talk about the staffing study.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Grover. At the last report or retreat that we did on Zoom, we brought you some work that we've been doing, asked you to reflect on it, took lots of good notes. We took that information back to our equity task force. Um, created a document similar to what you have today and then have met a couple more times to update it and make some changes. Um, in fact, what I'm going to share with you today on the screen has just slight differences um, to, to clarify some things. And I understand these screens look horrible, but I didn't know if you'd have the document I sent in front of you. I mean, I know this is way too much information. What I'm going to walk through today, either on the screen or if you have what I emailed to you, are just some of the things that are probably different since we talked at the board retreat. So as we look at our equity, equity definition, um, we had a suggestion to add what people need when they need it. We've talked about that a lot, um, that it's not the same for everyone, but we didn't have that in, in our definition. Then we talk about um, having an inclusive and anti-discriminatory environment. And I think with the things that have gone on through our, in our world, the last few months with Dr. Grover's statement with your resolution, we added some we added some firmness to this. We added some firm words, you know, I think that we've always said things like inclusive, but I'm not sure that we always said things like anti-discriminatory. So you'll see a little bit more of that in several places in here. Um, we are committed to disrupting and addressing our individual and district-wide biases. We want to empower individuals. It's not just a matter of staff making sure we do things appropriately. It's empowering students, staff, parents, whomever with the skills they need to advocate for themselves. And then we finish that definition with our um, our mission. That was really important to, in fact, I think you all said that maybe at your retreat because we've always had an equity-focused mission and this just gives a little bit more emphasis to it. Um, so then we have our equity commitments. If we go down to the next slide. And I don't think we changed much of those, but um, we did talk about then four different categories. So we can go on down to the next slide. These are the four areas that the rest of this document um, addresses. Access and inclusion, relationships, high expectations. And I, we, um, high expectations, that's a new title and I'll talk about that in a minute. And into um, intentional distribution of resources. So if you go on, we'll just go through those four and you can stop me at any time. I'm just going to tell you the main changes um, or the emphasis. We did not change this one much. This is really where we want school, home and community partnerships will foster a meaningful engagement. We can go on to the next one. Um, meaningful, we, we just shared some words that were impactful to people in our meeting this week, our task force meeting. Um, you know, and tried to get some of those in where appropriate. So meaningful engagement was one that we've kind of added that our partners would foster that meaningful engagement. We can go on down to the relationships and oh, let me see, yes, you're in the right place. Um, looking for evidence, that's one of the things we added. Not just saying we'll do it, but looking for evidence. You can go on down to the next one. We had something here about potential. And there was some, some wonderful input from a board member who'd attended some information that potential can actually be limiting. If, if I think a student's potential is to get a C because they're really struggling with a D or an F, maybe they're able to get an A. Um, so we really thought about that word and weren't sure what to do with it. Because you know, potential, we've always used it. So the suggestion here, and this was a very last minute suggestion, is to do high expectations. But then it was also suggested we add and availability of opportunities. So we're suggesting that this one be called high expectations and availability of opportunities. Um, some of the things, we made quite a few changes here. We celebrate the strengths and assets. That kind of goes back to high expectations. It's not um, not limiting. Meaningful and relevant opportunities to eliminate gaps. Um, some, I think it was Mrs. Hinkle who shared, really this whole thing revolves around, we're going to be happy when we don't see those gaps. When we see gaps, we know we're not there yet. So we wanted to get that in there. And then the self-advocacy and use of voice. And I, I'm not sure that was in there at all. You know, we've seen in our world riots, but it's, it's people being passionate. And so we want our students to learn, how do you use that voice? The frustration, the fear, whatever it is in your life, how do you use your voice for positive change? And then the intentional distribution of resources. I think what we added in that one, so that would be one more down, Dr. Doll. Based on student need and district priorities. Student need is always our number one driver. We may not always be able to meet every student need. I guess one example I think of is gifted and talented. We're rolling it out maybe a little more slowly than we'd intended. So we're going to look at student need. We're also going to look at that strategic plan and district priorities to help us with our distribution. So that's our current version. I'm not sure how much input you'll have. You can share it with me today if we have a few minutes. The intention was, you know, usually we bring things to, to relevant committees before we take them to the board. Well, every committee is a relative relevant committee to equity. So we're thinking by sharing this with you today, getting additional input if you have it, we're hoping to bring it back to you in July, possibly fraction. And then at a future date, we'll actually put it into policy. But we'd like the board to at least at whatever time you're comfortable, approve the definition and the equity commitments.
Uh, this is Bonnie and I was looking at it again right before the meeting. And the only thing I wondered, um, and this kind of goes because you mentioned earlier that we did empathy interviews. Is I wonder if somehow we need to, and maybe it's um, that first paragraph under equity commitments, but say something about how uh, we each need to be or show empathy or, and we, we are trying to teach our children empathy for others who are different from them as well. And so I don't know if that, where that fits, but that was the only thing I felt like maybe we wanted to add.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to uh, reinforce, I do believe that everyone should have a copy of it. If you do not, please uh, let us know uh, just so you can kind of spend some time and sit with it uh, before the July board meeting. Because as we go into August, we do think that having um, equity defined um, within our district and our commitments to equity is going to help us move our work forward with our staff. And so uh, we kind of consider this as an information opportunity, uh, action in July. And again, when uh, the policy meeting, uh, members convene in July, uh, we will have that opportunity to look at a form of policy and we will go through uh, the normal steps of first read and final read before we move to adoption of policy. Okay, with that being said, now we'd like to turn our attention to our staffing study discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. I thought I might start the discussion by revisiting uh, some of the rationale that was presented to the board when we originally asked your approval of the staffing study. And you're back, uh, I guess that was last fall. One of the things that we really emphasized was that uh, the purpose behind the staffing study was not specifically to cut expenses from the district budget. Uh, rather it was to, uh, out of recognition that we were currently spending about 83% of the budget on um, staffing and related costs. And that is about the most, you know, a healthy budget can handle uh, devoting, you know, just to, to staff-related costs. So that if we were going to continue to try to meet the ongoing and ever-increasing needs of the district, we were going to have to look for ways to reallocate uh, existing dollars versus just continuing to spend more and more on, you know, adding additional programs. So that was the whole intent behind having um, having the board approve the uh, the staffing plan. So as we talk here a little bit, I, I think one of the things we need to recognize is that possibly the landscape has changed a little bit. Uh, because back in the fall, we weren't faced with this current reality of uh, the impact on our economy from COVID-19. So uh, with that being said, um, you recall in uh, June, when DMG presented the staffing analysis at the board meeting. You know, they really presented um, a number of recommendations. And one of the things that they emphasized very strongly was that there is no way we can implement or in, in all likelihood, there's no way we can implement or achieve all of the recommendations that they have put in there. That it was our responsibility to look at those. And you know, based upon our strategic plan, uh, what we feel is important to our, our stakeholders and our district and our students. Um, and what we have, you know, the financial capacity to uh, to consider that we should prioritize those recommendations and start, you know, um, pursuing those recommendations in, in that prioritized fashion. And that in all likelihood, we would not be able to get to every one of their recommendations. So um, you know, as we looked at that staffing analysis in totality, they had recommendations that both uh, proposed some possible um, dollars that could be uh, reallocated um, to other programs. And then they also proposed some opportunities for us to look at uh, some processes that might not necessarily be a reduction in staff, but a more effective utilization of existing staff uh, based upon the amount of time they spend in contact with students. So that um, you know, we wouldn't have to continue to add because, you know, some of those areas that they felt our staff contact percentage of time in contact with students are some of the areas that we've struggled hiring or uh, we feel our need to continue to grow at a very fast rate or in some cases are also very hard to fill positions. And so then we struggle with this feeling or belief that we don't have enough staff to, to meet, need all of our needs. So as we uh, reviewed the staffing analysis uh, at the cabinet level and talked about what some of the next steps might be. One of the things that really uh, came to the forefront of our discussion was uh, the academic return on investment uh, process. And um, you know, there was, there's been some reference to that in earlier uh, comments related to how it might be part of the program evaluation process. So in preparation for our continued discussions and for your information today, uh, we did go back to district management group and ask them for a recommendation or a proposal on, you know, what some additional academic return on investment professional development might look like. So uh, we just got that report, I believe it was yesterday or the day before. So as a cabinet, we've not even had a, the opportunity yet in a, in a focused conversation to really go through the details of that proposal. And uh, you'll come to a consensus on, you know, if we feel it hits the mark, if we want to tweak it or if we want to throw it out the window. I don't think the last option is uh, going to be our recommendation by any means. But I just mentioned that, you know, we haven't really had a chance to, to dissect it a, a great degree. But what I was intrigued by with what they have proposed is that uh, first of all, they've broken it down as they did the initial staffing analysis into a couple of different options for us. Uh, they call it work stream one. Uh, work stream one is, you know, building capacity and expertise for academic return on investments. So that would be the formal training that all administrators would go through to uh, actually understand the process and um, that we'd be able to use um, not only, you know, say through the program evaluation process, but also um, as we work with our administrators and we look for opportunities and for ways to uh, better meet the needs of our students. Uh, you, we can look at those proposals, say through the staffing process. You, we can look at those proposals, say through the staffing process, staffing proposal process. And we can look at it in terms of an academic return on investment to determine if, if, you know, we're really going to be able to track the effectiveness of it. And you know, what we think that return might be. I think it's extremely important that we have a coherent approach to academic return on investment that we have broad spread or broad professional development. So everybody understands it. Everybody understands the process of how it's calculated, what components go into that. Because you know, one of the things that we found through, you know, other endeavors that we've tried is if there's not total transparency in how we get from point A to point B, it's easy for people to become distrustful or not supportive or just, you know, lack of ownership. And this, you know, process of going through this with district management council would, I think certainly accomplish, you know, some of those needs. Work stream number two is the creating greater voice and ownership for school principals and budgeting. And you know, that's something that I think, you know, through some of the work Virgil's been doing, you know, aligning our practices with GFOA, you know, would, would have, you know, included a greater voice for our principals. But you know, it's one thing to say we want to give our principals greater voice. The next question is how are we going to do that? You know, we've been in situations in the past where, you know, we've tried to get input from people and people speak up and, and give us an opinion. And then if their opinion isn't accepted, then they say, well, I guess they don't really care what I have to say. And then that just causes people to kind of shut down, you know, after that. So I think if we are really committed to empowering our building principles and our administrators to take ownership in and to have a greater voice and to really put the time and the energy and the effort into bringing their needs forward, going through that critical analysis, even going through their own maybe informal academic return on investment of a proposal they're, they're working on to address a need they have in their building. You know, we want to set them up for success so that they bring things to us that we go, great idea. That's exactly what we need to do to close that achievement gap or to address that specific need. So you know, I think that, you know, there's great value in considering, you know, work stream one and, and work stream two as well. You, one of the things that I, I know is, is always a question and always an issue. And you know, one of the things, you know, as I looked at their proposal and, and the cost of that proposal, my initial reaction was ouch. That seems kind of pricey. But you know, one, one of the things we asked them to put into the proposal was, you know, if we're going to go through a training on academic return on investment, it's one thing to go through a hypothetical model, you know, and I think we can relate this to, you know, our, our teachers that go through, you know, their teacher preparation program. You know, they come to us and they always say, you know, I took a couple of classes or we talked about classroom management once, but it did not. It was nothing like what, you know, I'm really experiencing in the classroom. I think the same could be held, held true here. We can go through a hypothetical example of an academic return on investment calculation or process. But then when it's time for us to start doing our own academic return on investment, dealing with, you know, the numbers and, and the issues that we have to deal with, all of a sudden we could find ourselves, you know, saying, well, this isn't exactly like that model that they took us through in that quick training. So one of the things that is part of their proposal and work stream one is that we would actually identify a program, a Grand Island Public Schools program that we would have, you know, they would come in and, you know, gather all the data, you know, of that program that would go into that, that process, that calculation. And, you know, in other words, they'd go through our first academic return on investment calculation of, of one of our programs with us. I, I think it'll be so much more meaningful if we, you know, look at something we're doing. And I don't think we have any trouble at all coming up with the program. It's one of the things we heard from Nate Levinson, you know, with a smile when he talked about, you know, asked in their interviews, are there, are there programs that, you know, you feel the district should take a look at if, you know, maybe whether they're worth continuing. And he said they really easily, people came up with all kinds of ideas and suggestions for things we're doing that they kind of question if, if, you know, that might not be a candidate for an academic return on investment study. So, so that's part of the reason this is a little bit more expensive than maybe what I expected or, or what, you know, one would normally think for, for some training is that they're actually going to going to knock one out for us and, and we'll be part of that process. So we can have some hands-on learning experience. The other thing I just wanted to kind of mention or, or remind the board, you know, we spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the staffing analysis. And if we do both work streams on this proposal, that's going to be another a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So between the two, we'd have almost three hundred and twenty thousand dollars invested in, in this process. And that is a tremendous amount of money. But I just kind of want to, you know, to, to put that into perspective, I guess. The recommendations that they had in the staffing analysis of some dollars that might become available to, you know, reallocate that recommendation or, or the sum of those recommendations totaled between three point four and four point two million dollars. So, you know, this three hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost is, you know, about ten percent of the low end of those recommendations. Now, as I said earlier, there's no way we're going to be able to do all of those recommendations, but the, the point I guess I'm trying to make is that, you know, if we really want to accomplish some of the recommendations that are in the staffing analysis, you know, this additional investment in the academic return on investment process probably is going to improve the odds that will capture some of the savings that, that they've, that they've identified. And you know, when I said earlier that we might have to kind of refocus whether we're looking for expense savings or whether we're looking for dollars to reallocate for, for other needs, you know, obviously it's probably going to be both now. One of the things that I think we have to look at as a reality is that we are going to have an impact to the district on the resources we have to continue spending to meet our needs. And you know, if, if in the next year, two years, three years, if we end up with, you know, a million or a couple of million dollars worth of revenue deductions from whatever sources they may be, we may need to rely upon some of this information in this academic return on investment training to help us more effectively figure out how to reduce some of the costs that we have to, to reduce so that we can balance, balance the budget. So I, I, I really see this proposal as, you know, an, an additional investment to improve our odds of meeting our future obligations, whether it's budgetary obligations or, you know, staffing needs obligations. So, so I wanted to, to talk about that. I'll, you know, talk a little bit more about maybe timeline and some things, but I might pause right now and just, you know, with this proposal as our most recent discussion point. Anybody have any questions or, or thoughts about the proposal?
I do.
Okay.
Um, we only have the odd numbered pages in our packet. We don't have any of the even numbers. So some of the stuff you were talking about, we couldn't see. Could you just email it to us?
Absolutely. My apologies.
Nope, you're fine.
Any other questions on the proposal? Okay. Well, I know we're interested in time here, so I don't want to cut anybody's thoughts off, but I'll, I'll kind of keep moving. So you know, just, you know, as far as, you know, kind of the, the, what do we see maybe as a timeline? You're kind of a preliminary timeline that we're looking at is if we were, are, if we are able to get the additional academic return on investment training approved, we would probably be looking at doing that sometime, you know, right after, you know, in that September, October sort of a timeframe. Need a little bit of time for folks to get back on contract and, you know, for us to get the new school year kicked off and, and things like that. But I think with that additional training, then, you know, through the rest of the fall, we would certainly be in a position to, you know, start implementing some of those processes to evaluate those programs and, you know, determine, you know, kind of what what priorities we might have as far as our recommendations are. We certainly need and want to engage, you know, the broader administrative team in setting those priorities. It'd be a little dangerous for us as a small group of, you know, say the, the cabinet to, to say these are going to be the district priorities. You know, and then go out to the organization and people say, well, what about this and why not that? And so I think we, we will need to engage our, our administrators at the very least and maybe even a broader audience to determine what those priorities all, all are. You know, ideally if we could get, you know, towards the end of the first semester with having some of the academic return on investment information available to us with having those priorities identified. Then, you know, as we start to build the staffing plan next spring, then I think, you know, we would be able to take those recommendations into consideration and have them, you know, implemented. Put some of them implemented for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Make sure I get my years right. You know, as far as the twenty-twenty-one school year goes, you know, was there any low hanging fruit in the, in the analysis that, that we could implement right away? In essence, we have to a, a fairly small but limited degree. If you recall, when we brought you the final version of the staffing plan at the, at the last moment, because that was just when, you know, everything was hitting with the, with the pandemic. We, one of the things that we committed to in the staffing plan was, for instance, at the elementary level, if we are going to have to add any additional elementary positions due to unexpected enrollments that, that come in late, that we will not take them from a contingency plan, or we will not ask the board for additional positions approved. But we will find other places within the district. Maybe where we could take an FTE from a building and, you know, we don't get that class size, you know, too far out of whack. And we've already implemented one decision like that. We had an opportunity, we had a late request for release from contract from a teacher at Gates Elementary School. And Gates was one of the schools that I had identified that could potentially get by with, you know, one fewer FTE given some of the, you know, little bit tweaking of the class size recommendations. And we had a need to, to add a position or an FTE over at Westlon Elementary School. So we did, so we allowed that staff member to resign from Gates. We did not replace that position at Gates. And then we were able to hire, take that FTE and move it over to, to Westlon. I, I believe there's going to be at least one other opportunity to do that before school starts. So, so right there's a hundred and thirty thousand bucks that, you know, we've potentially will have saved or, you know, implemented. So that, you know, that, those two right there will pay for the, the, the academic return on investment training. So how's that sound? So, you know, so we are looking for those opportunities where, where possible to, to make some early, early adoptions of their recommendations. So with that, I, I would open it up to, to any other questions that you might have.
Jane, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Bros.
I don't know that I feel comfortable making a decision about the amount of money this is going to cost. And I'm curious if after you have a chance to talk with the, the cabinet and the entire administrative team, if you wouldn't want to bring something back, some of the information that we don't have back to the personnel committee, maybe in August? And let the, let the personnel committee chew on some of that, ask questions. And then possibly we go from there.
Absolutely.
That's the thing we ought to do.
Yeah, absolutely. I should have made myself more clear. I was not asking for board approval for this proposal today. You know, I, I'm hopeful that maybe, you know, this could serve as the information item, so to speak, where the board, typically the board hears an information item one month and then they approve it the next month. So, you know, if this could serve maybe as the information item, you know, we can talk more as a cabinet, we can talk more on personnel. And then, you know, the next time we present or bring this before the full board, perhaps we would have enough information for everybody that, you know, we could say, if it's, whether it's, you know, like Dr. Bros, you said, if we bring it forward in August, you know, then we could just ask for approval in August and not have to wait till September. And, uh, because one of the things that we will want to be able to do, if, if possible, if we do move forward with this, is to have enough time to, you know, go through the training, go through the academic return on investment, the, the prioritizing process, all of those things, and be in a position when we start building next year's staffing plan, that we'll be able to start. You know, accomplishing or achieving some of those recommendations. So if we get too far into the fall, we may run out of time to, to effectively accomplish some of this, the redirection, reallocation or savings for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But, but by no means are we asking you for approval this afternoon.
Uh, I know we've had quite a bit of information shared with the, the staffing study in general. So you have the document that DMG went over at the board meeting. And now you kind of, we will get the, the full document to you. I, I might ask that if you have a few minutes that you, you know, would go through and say, what, what things are encouraging to you? What things you want to have more discussion about? And, you know, maybe just send it to Mr. Stelk along with me. If you have, if you're very passionate about it. I do think we're going to need that time and personnel to really go through some of the feedback from cabinet and what we're thinking about. And at that point, we'll be in a better position to establish a timeline about bringing it to the board. So, you know, just to, to keep in mind the investment that we put into the staffing study. But we recognize that it's going to be some shifts and probably some more formalized shifts. And so as we have strategies, we want to align those strategies with our values and what we're trying to achieve. But one of the things that we cannot escape is the fact that we do need to reduce some costs. And we're reducing costs to the point of trying to drive towards our strategic priorities. So I want to make sure that I kind of just anchor that in clearly, because as we kind of move through the rest of the strategic plan and what we want to achieve in our district, we have to see what's relevant, what's meaningful for us now to finish out the work. So really think about it as strategic, being strategic, strategic budgeting to drive the priorities of the district. We do know that we fully expect more discussion and feedback. And wow, it's two o'clock. We are on schedule. It is time for a break. We'll see you back at two fifteen.
I think, uh, we're ready to start. If Dr. Grover and the board are ready. All right. Well, this is exciting. I'm, I'm really, really excited to share with you things that we learned in. E-learning engagement during the March through May timeframe and also things we did with the game plan. I understand that some of this is going to be, uh, new things that we're sharing, so I, I want to take time. At different, at different points to give you a chance to ask a question or, you know, feel free to, to, uh, to just. Ask a question if you need to, but we don't want to, uh, to go too fast on something or make it, make it unclear. So, uh, first, uh, what are these? Sorry, I just need to hide something. So what are we talking about here in terms of engagement? After we unexpectedly started the, uh, remote learning. In March, we, uh, needed to find a way to, to understand how well students were engaging and. As, uh, many of you know, uh, we also, because of state guidance initially. Moved towards not having grades change and then gradually the secondary schools wanted to give students an opportunity to improve their grades. But, uh, there might've been some students that, that didn't connect with us during that time. And so we wanted to learn. Both learn who is engaging and who wasn't. How could we understand and compare that across school levels? And secondly, we wanted to have a plan for disengaged students. So we have to engage them. We have to understand them first and identify them before we can develop that plan. And last, we wanted to have system level data. In other words, not just have, uh, uh, eighteen schools with eighteen different sets of data, but we wanted to create one data set. So the game plan was the flip side of engagement. We wanted to start developing a plan. For students that were disengaged during e-learning. And we were thinking proactively ahead because in the fall, those same students that were disengaged in e-learning. Were going to be working on their, uh, how to make up their, for their, uh, learning loss. And, uh, as well, some of those students who are in summer programs are doing that as well. But more specifically with the engage, disengaged students, we want to understand what barriers were they're facing? And what interventions had their teachers tried? And so the reason we wanted to gain this piece of information is because in the next school year, we wanted to have. The new teacher who have these same students have kind of a head start. Here's some things I learned about these. This student, here's some things I tried, and here's even a, a, a main support person that was able to. Provide help with this student so that you can carry that work forward. And again, our goal was to keep towards the fall twenty twenty. What, what will we do to help these students close their learning gaps? So before I get into engagement and also the game plan, I want to just. Move towards a diagram of improvement that kind of goes from right to left. So you're gonna have, we're all gonna have to kind of shift our brain for a second. Think of those six things that are in the middle of the page as being, as being a type of a driver. If you do this thing, it's going to lead to the aim on the left side of the page. So if we have highly trained local data analysis skills, that's going to be a school level thing as well as district level, by the way. But that's going to help us understand and improve student attendance, behavior course proficiency. And, and we could read through each of these kind of, uh, secondary, these, these actions that are in the middle, they're going to help us in, in our aim. So we worked with an outside consultant on the game plan and they helped, helped us improve this methodology. It's called a driver diagram. And they worked through two, two specific areas in terms of barriers that, that students with game plans would be facing. And also how we could really highly develop the support leader. Who's going to be working with those students and that support leader in the next, in our next school year is mainly going to be their teacher. But it's also going to be a group of other, other adults around each student. So again, we were trying to think right to left. So I'm going to ask us, if we think of those. Those two areas that I just highlighted before targeted barriers and also the relational skills of a support person. The big question with this empty box is what do you do to start this process? And it's kind of, again, it initially trust us, we all kind of just scratched our head a bit with this. But if we want to understand root causes for each barrier, if we want to develop a hypothesis for an intervention, if we want to develop some. Common interventions, we actually did have to do something before that. In other words, before developing the solution to a problem, we need to actually go one step before that. And, and I'll just say something about the bottom one, relational skills. Before we understand root causes and those hypotheses, we want to do one step deeper with our support person. That we're going to, that's going to be working with each child. So we've, uh, Dr. Or, Ms. Worthington talked earlier about empathy interviews that we conducted this year and fifty-nine students. So empathy interviews are, interviews are a great way of understanding interventions that can work. And how to, how to train those on specific students. At the same time, our work in dashboarding is something that really can help, help put gears. On the work of any support person to help them work better with students. So again, this is something that might be a little unfamiliar. At first, but it's something we're going to be working with the, uh, the teachers and principals in the fall. As they support game plan students. So it's a segue. Going to come back to engagement and just ask what trends were there and how can we respond? In other words, what do we learn? What can we do about it? Uh, I already mentioned that we wanted to have one system, so this slide kind of repeats the same idea. But really the truth in red there is that we were challenged in good ways as we tried to find a way. How do we develop an engagement store for every student? And you might think, well, that's, that's ten thousand scores, but actually it's more than ten thousand scores. Because lots of students have multiple classes. So, um, and I'll, I'll just take a pause for a second. Um, are we, is everything presenting while we're seeing, seeing the presentation slides? I know my voice is kind of covering things, but just want to make sure the, uh, that it's the right size and such. So there were twenty thousand scores for students based on in secondary levels, multiple classes. Of students. Again, a score, we haven't really told you what a score is. So, um, on the left side here, we have, uh, none, low, moderate, high. And, uh, just those four areas that are in colors, those were the four different areas for engagement scores. You either didn't engage at all, that was nothing, that was none. Or you had a low level of engagement that was inconsistent, you might not, you might've tried something, but there wasn't a sign of, of consistent learning. Moderate was that you were engaging. And even regularly from time to time, but it was, it really overall was just something that was inconsistent and your efforts at learning weren't. Weren't developing towards consistency and I would, high, high rate of engagement would have that consistency. So the percentages here, and I'm, I'm focusing on the left side of this page still. The percentages here just focus that at a district level, we had fifty percent of our students. Having a moderate to high level of engagement during the e-learning timeframe, those, those two, two months. So now, as I look at the right side of this page, possibly should have used two slides, but it's broken out by school. And something we can initially see as we look at all the elementary schools together is that the. Green and the orange bars are quite large if you look at them together. Across the entire elementary level, across schools. And granted, it's larger for some schools and perhaps smaller for others, but even that it's over. Easily that it's over seventy percent for schools that were even the smallest. So that was, that was a really high plus point. And we noticed that there is a shift that happens when we get to the secondary levels. It actually. It actually is quite well aligned with our shift in attendance that we know that, that we're working on and we're working to close those gaps. So we saw that same, a similar shift in terms of kids that didn't engage. The interesting thing was, and this was a lesson for us, the students who didn't engage, there was a frequent common story that it would have, at the secondary levels, it had to do with the grades. In other words, they already knew what their grade was going to be in many classes. And so they, if their grade was something that they could make peace with, they didn't make any other, any additional effort. And it was both a lesson for us and also we, we have to remember it was a, a huge crisis at that time of, you know, the, the feelings were very raw and they're not raw. There, there, it's not that that feeling's gone away, there's still a, a great concern. But, but I just want to say, we have to, we did what we could with what we had at that time. And we turned around in a number of ways, as many students as we could, and then where the whole purpose of this research was to find the ones that we need to keep going with and then have that proactive work for the fall. So as we focus on special population, there's some abbreviations here. So ELL is English Language Learner. And the three graphs are by, by academic levels. The left side is elementary, the middle one is, is middle school and the upper, the high school is on the right side. FRL is free and reduced lunch, so students with economic needs in their family. And the last one, IEP, I think we're familiar, special education. So again, if we want to take the, the first thing to, to look here, we look at the orange and the green and notice that for, for special populations at the elementary, those, those are fairly large. And we all, one other positive point we can take is that the numbers across those three populations are not greatly different. In other words, there's a, there's a larger area of consistency with free and reduced K through, K through eight, which means that more of those, more of students with economic need are, are finding ways to, to, to connect with the education. Um, but again, there were, there were similar levels across, across each of these special population areas. So that was a glimmer of hope, a good sign that there wasn't a gigantic area crying out. So I'm gonna pause and ask, as we heard that, as we thought about that, and you all have, each have local knowledge, you each have experience of this, what does just thinking about engagement so far cause you to think of? Or question about or wonder about or an extension? Take a pause here.
Dr. Dahl, this is Lisa Albers.
Hello.
Hello. Hey, I had a question. So just with my personal experience, and I might be curious what Heidi had to say with this with her daughter, although she was a senior. You know, so I work from home, so I'm home and Maria was home doing her schooling. And that the teachers would email me, and so then I would email, I think they emailed all teach, all parents. And then I follow up with Maria, like, okay, did you get this email and you have, it looks like you have this due. So then it would create some dialogue between the two of us about what she had, not that she liked the dialogue, but, but it created the dialogue about what, so then she knew that I knew what she was expected to do. And so I wonder if something else that might be interesting to look at is how many of these kids had parents at home, you know, that either worked from home or weren't working or were able to stay engaged because I do think that has some bearing on how well she did. But I'm curious if you might find that would have some bearing on how well other students did as well.
Thank, thanks. That's a really important point, Lisa. And I think also even siblings at home, we could add to that. With some students that, that meant a, a caring, care providing role. But even with other students, in other words, an older, older student might be providing some academic supports to a younger student. There's, there's really a lot of areas we could continue this research, I agree with you. And in many, many of the conversations with principals, exactly what you're sharing Okay. about parents at home came up frequently. And I think district wide, I think we developed a much deeper connection with parents than we had prior to COVID, kind of like a huge silver lining.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for, for sharing that.
Thank you. I'll jump in there a little bit too, just from my perspective and granted Elise was a, a senior, so a little bit different, little bit different take on it, but I, I would agree, three of the teacher and, and she probably, she had three, maybe four AP classes and the rest were fine arts. Well, fine arts obviously was very difficult to do e-learning. So that pretty much dropped off, dropped off the scale. Her AP courses, they did, they did email the parents and I was able to follow up and I do think that makes a difference. But I, I also know Elise said on a couple occasions, you know, well, I know what my grade is and I'm not worried about it. So I, I think, I think it just shows that how much grading influences how kids are driven. And, and I'd be interested to, to watch, you know, we talked about, Dr. Palmer touched on, on grading practices going forward and that kind of thing, but and keeping that in perspective as far as how much grades influence how kids react and how much they want to achieve is a big driver, I think, too.
You're exactly right, Heidi. And I think COVID shined a gigantic spotlight on everything we were doing right. It said, these things are working and keep doing this further. And everything that, it may not have been that it wasn't working, but it, but is this something that you can strengthen? In other words, grading? Yeah, I think we've, we've definitely, we've, we've got our head on our shoulders for, for what we need to do in any, any form of e-learning environment that can come up, whether it's short term for students that need it or just however that can be, it's, it's guided us as we've been working on models.
Dr. Dahl, I'll just interject here. So and doctors, as we talk about the fall models, we'll be able to talk about grading and how we're moving that forward, but also I think it'd be interesting to maybe, maybe hold on to the comments about the parents and who's at home to help. And when you see some of the survey data that we put out for this fall, we'll be able to find some of those intersections of thought with a later presentation. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Great, great point. Go ahead.
All right, Dr. Dahl, um, I just had a thing that I noticed, but I think it's a two slides back. Um, when you were having this look on the left-hand side and then you had the graph going this way. I know that's, it's super weird, but the colors don't match and it confused me for a second because you have none. Um, as red.
You are, great, great call, Erica. Not only will I fix that, but just great call. I really appreciate you for pointing out. I, I also kind of look for those things too. If I could just mention, in the presentation that we're using today, I've shared with all of you, but I didn't send you an email. But I shared with you these slides, so after the presentation, I'll, I'll just send a nudge when this is fixed. Appreciate you for pointing that out. Thank you. And it's embarrassing, but we gotta just learn on the go. So I'm going to shift gears and move to game plan and again, give you a chance to do a little reflection at the end of game plan. So, um, first of all, game plan, I told the, the acronym for it, grow, achieve, innovate, navigate. And I kind of gave a picture already of who we were trying to, to look at. The, and really that it's aligned to our mission. We want to identify kids that need assistance so that every student, every day can be a success. Um, I just want to briefly, like really briefly, this is a sample survey, so it's not open, no one can do it. But it would be where a, a school person would then fill out a survey for each student. They'd select the students, select the class they were struggling with, fill out their participation level in e-learning, they talk about barriers. They talk about other barriers, in other words, type it in. They talk about levers of support. And they talk about who's Lee, who's the leader of the supports. So I know I'm kind of racing through this, but this is open, the links in the, in the presentation, you can look further at it. And I'm also happy to email, email this link to you. But I just, I don't want to start talking about what we learned, if you don't know kind of how it was. Each teacher went and filled out that survey form. And also we had social workers filling it out and we had counselors filling it out. And they were each identifying three students who were the ones who most struggled in their experience. And so even high school teachers and, and middle school, they had a large group of students to pick three, so it was really just a sample. So next, so what did we learn? What happened? There's a lot of data on here and I kind of just want to focus on the bottom purple where it says 1400. So there are 1400 students that were identified through game plans across grade levels, so 800 of those approximately were at the elementary level and, and we could look. And the, the balance were at the secondary level. I found though, that at the secondary level, because students had multiple classes, that there might have been multiple teachers that identified a student with a game plan. So I've gone through and, and a student that might have had two game plans from two different teachers. I've combined those so that we have that information. Again, we want any teacher with a student this coming school year to be able to know if that student has a game plan, what's the heads up information I need to help me be successful with the student of all. So again, it's 1400 students and it was a, a rather good representation of students across, across student, the student body. It wasn't just that only one group of schools did it, it was a rather good representation. Yeah, excuse me, I spoke too fast. Representation across the student body. So with that, it was also a rather complimentary view of our ethnicities of students. In other words, while the green in this diagram is slightly more for Hispanic students, the reality is our game plans almost in a very similar pie shape represent our students. So that's, that's good news in a great way. In other words, we have students that are identified from every ethnicity and gender and identified for extra supports and then we have that information. So another plus point. So Erica, I think I'm going to get dinged on the color again, so I'll just, I'll catch your question in advance, forgive me for colors for a second. So I just want to talk about this first and second. In other words, the left side of the page was what was the main struggle of students and you notice that that blue bar is bigger for everybody. In other words, that English Language Arts was the main struggle across levels that was identified for students. So, and you also notice there's a tiny green bar in the middle school students, middle schools as a group asked if we would add social studies to the game plan. And so we did, we did that for them. We didn't go back and retroactively add that for the other, other schools because we didn't, it was a very busy time and we, we wanted to just respect the, the attention to learning that each group of schools was making, but not add burdens. So now on the right side of that diagram, and again with Erica pointed out with colors that can be improved. But we have engagement levels before COVID and then engagement levels during COVID. And you notice, I'm gonna just add the first two, in other words, the blue and the red. You notice that during COVID, most of the students with game plans were not engaged. I think we should expect that because we actually asked them to help us find those kids. So this kind of says something interesting though, that before COVID, a lot of these kids, if you combine on the top bar, the orange and the green before COVID, a lot of these kids were engaged before. In other words, COVID itself dealt a, dealt a bad, a bad card to them. They didn't, they didn't engage. So we want to, that's the whole reason for the game plan. We want to have a way to help these students catch up. So next is barriers and levers of support. And I want to just say something about the left side before I go through it. You notice how family needs is kind of in the middle, it's kind of on the white area. Family needs should be about three millimeters higher. For some odd reason, it put it under, but it actually is referring to that bar that's above it. So with this, I just want to point out the major barrier is, is the orange area. So made the most major barrier was academic supports. That's the largest orange area and in terms of being a major barrier. Um, I want to point out something that's of interest if we look at all these barriers together. The barrier language proficiency, which is the second one from the bottom. Remember before I told you that ELA was a large struggle for students, in other words, across the district? Here it's interesting that its language proficiency is not considered a barrier. You know, by so many students, it's, in other words, that blue is almost the largest across, except for the other category, which I'll talk about in just a bit. But so that's kind of interesting. English Language Arts is, is a subject area of struggle, but it's not because of language proficiency. It may well be because of deeper learning in English, in, in the English language. So again, we have more work to do on this, especially with these students. Turning our attention to the right side, the top lever of support, better communication with all stakeholders, parents, family and, and community and virtual live check-ins, those were the two biggest support areas for students with game plans. And I'm just pivoting things I already said. So the last part of the game plan was who is the person who's in charge? Who's the one who's leading to help this student? And we wanted to give that information to teachers next year because every student, think of a comment, or think of a lock with a key. Every student has a different lock to, to help, to get into their heart, to help them to work. With some students, it's the teacher, another student, it might be the janitor, another student might be the nurse. But we wanted the, who is the leader of support means who's the person who has the strongest connection to the student? So teachers by and large self-identified that they were the one leading that charge and that's awesome. But you know, in a lot of students where it's different, different leaders that were brought up and some folks even typed in the name of someone in the game plan and we have that data. We wanted the teacher next year to know who's the one who made that strongest connection so that they know to kind of build on that. So last thing I want to talk about, and we're just kind of keeping a, a, the top, the first things that we learn about the game plan. We had a number of places in that survey where, where we asked for other information. And I just want to share with you, I read several hundred of these responses of what barriers were the kids had during COVID and a lot of them are, were quite heartbreaking and quite respected the work that, that each of us are, are just so dedicated to. So it's, it's both a, a good thing that we found out some of these barriers so that we can help lift them. But at the same time, it, it brings us forward to that work in the fall and helping teachers know better how to connect in specific areas or be, be better, better supporters, I guess, in different areas that students struggled. So we want to kind of increase that learning curve for these students and the teachers that work with them. So I think I'm doing good on time because I've been, I've been tracking. But how are we doing for the game plan? I haven't told you what we're going to do with it or, you know, what's the, the plan, the game plan, plan, so to speak, but does this lead you to a thought, a wonder, a question?
Um, Dr. Dahl, what were some of the barriers that you, I guess, weren't expecting? Just one or so off the top of your head.
I think Dr. Dexter brought this up in a number of meetings with social workers. The, the amount of trauma that was, that some kids were facing. And it wasn't always, you know, when we think of trauma, sometimes we think of a broken home, but there were just so many different shapes to that and, and shapes of need the kids had. And I think so many different things that could have happened in families and/or to siblings and/or just the level of struggle. And, and I didn't mention it here, but early on in, in COVID, we provided hotspots to students that didn't have access to the internet so that we could help close that educational gap. And I think some of the, just some of the, the dire economic need that some, some kids were facing. It, it wasn't just a, a regular learning environment to, to show up any learning each day. That, that, I think the family one, as I just said, spoke out to the, the most to me and was even in some cases, the most troubling. But it gives us inspiration to, to help provide more supports. Any other thoughts, wonders, questions? You can still ask because I have, my last slide says, do you have any questions? I just want to say where we're headed. So engagement was a wonderful opportunity for us to take a snapshot of two months. But two months is kind of too long to, to have as a snapshot. So in the fall, we, we're planning on students that are at any form of, of outside of school, we want to have a weekly snapshot at minimum. In other words, the, the, we really want to have a daily snapshot, but with some students who are on, on e-learning, we want to add to that, that we have a qualitative engagement score on a weekly basis. And so also, we didn't share in here, but we have a new feature rolling out in synergy that we can check in with students and that students who check in with teachers can be recorded. So we have that information and it'll improve our, our understanding and engagement. And with the game plan, we've actually been developing in synergy, a way to have teachers access all of the game plan data and even other forms of data, attendance behavior, course proficiency for these students in the fall through synergy, all in one place, really easy to access. And not needing to look students up, but just your teacher, you'll see your students really quick and easy. So our goal with the game plan is to assess, monitor, adapt, check in with teachers, provide supports and learn along the way. With that, I want to finish my time a minute early, but ask if you have any questions. With that, I want to finish my time a minute early, but ask if you have any questions.
This is Bonnie and the question I would have is, are we doing the same thing for the summer learning opportunities? Checking to see how many kids are engaging?
We do, I think the, the best example of that, Ms. Hinkle, is that at the, for all the Title One schools. We have actually the same engagement score process and we have a dashboard that's updated daily when students engagement's been recorded. My understanding, and Dr. Palmer could speak to this, but each of the other. Each of the other summer schools have a, a complimentary or a different, different engagement that they're scoring with each student. But they, those teachers could report out on it and I think Dr. Palmer could lend more information. I, I helped make the graphs for the Title One folks, they're really cool. I'll share them if, if you're interested. With that, I'm going to hand the keys over to Mr. Jack Shears.
Excellent, Dr. Grover, do you want to say anything before we got started?
Uh, yes, we had one item beforehand, Dr. Doll, you were off by five minutes. We needed to, uh, have Dr. Palmer report on the learning loss.
Oh, got it, I'm putting it up, my apologies.
All right, I feel like I'm just a little five-minute commercial here and it's kind of a nice little follow-up to Dr. Doll's information. So the question keeps popping up, like, what do we do about the unfinished learning? Because we know that that occurred. And we, you know, our team actually has gone through. A, a real in-depth study of what were the standards that our kids needed to know and be able to do in that third trimester of school. And really, we did a lot of research too, we did a ton of reading, we worked with the experts, Unbounded, especially and Achieve the Core. Were some really good resources. The State Department has also been involved and we've been communicating with them too. About how do we best address the unfinished learning that took place? How do we figure out what it was? And, and really we focused in on those critical standards. What were the things, essential things that our kids were learning that they needed to know and be able to do at the end of the year? So this document just kind of shows you what we really paid attention to. It's just a visual of where the unfinished learning took place in nineteen twenty. It's the red part in the third trimester of school. And so our, um, our, our HRL team, man, they've been working hard. But they went into the curriculum and really found, um, once they identified what the standards were, they went into the curriculum for this next year and identified. Where are those skills? Where do they resurface in the next year of school for our kids? And then what do we need to do to make sure that we assess where kids are at that point? And then what tools do we give them to address that learning in the curriculum? So that second part of that graph on the bottom for elementary, middle school, it shows you. You know, how it's integrated, those integrated supports will take place. So trimester one, you know, there are certain, certain skill sets, certain essential standards that are going to pop up. That kids should, should have had or would have experienced in the third trimester of the previous year. And so they built that into actually the curriculum maps. So here's how you pre-assess whether or not kids have those skills or if they need additional support of those skills. And then they identified in the curriculum resources and instructional resources where that would come from. So, um, they've done, they're, they're almost through eighth grade, we got to work with some high school folks. So that we started with algebra as well, because that's a really big one, students coming in. So we feel really good that we have a plan and our teachers will be onboarded onto this when they come back in the fall. For their curriculum meeting prior to school starts, we're actually going to walk them through some examples as to. How that looks and how they can utilize the instructional maps to make sure that they are identifying that unfinished learning. And that they recognize where those supports are to help address it. So there's my five-minute commercial, if you have any questions.
Tony, does that mean that there'll be like pre-tests and post-tests of that information?
Absolutely, yeah, and they actually, they've actually pinpointed it in the curriculum, like kids will have unfinished. This is where some of the, the standards surface. Here's the assessment that you need to give to identify what that unfinished learning is. And here are some strategies or some tools and the resources to address it. It's been a lot of work, but it's, it's going to be really worth it. I think it's, it's very intentional.
So Dr. Palmer, I, I have a question about that then. Do we also know where that's assessed on the MAP test for later?
Well, yes, I mean, there, there's, there's, standards are definitely aligned. So what it will tell us though is, you know, kind of reaffirm to what we know, what we think we know about where kids are coming in. But it'll reaffirm if there are some bigger gaps that we need to address. Because we, we know that students went into that third quarter with some gaps. So there may be some other areas that we need to intensify some supports.
Thank you.
We're a little worried about what MAP is going to look like. It's going to really depend on the environment that we're in. So, you know, we're really hoping that our kids are in session so that we can assess our students. And the students that are e-learning, we're really working on, how do we address that? Do we bring those students in and have them test on campus? Because based on what we've done, the work we've done with NWEA, it's not really a good assessment. It's really hard to do virtually. So we're still trying to work through that plan.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer and Dr. Doll, any other questions from any of the board members? I think one of the things that we're trying to accomplish here with trying to do the academic bridging. As well as the game plan is oftentimes we're able to put interventions in. But we're not able to track the implementation of the intervention as well as the impact along the way. We're still working, uh, you know, to try to fine tune our data tools for the game plan. But I think that we are definitely on to something special here. Because it is very difficult for any district to be able to track the interventions and the impact that it's having. And so if we can continue to fine tune that, I think it's going to be very beneficial to us as we move forward. So thank you both for how you are combining those efforts to ensure that we reach student success. Now we're ready to turn our attention. To, we've kind of given you like the strategic plan update, maybe kind of looking back. And now we want to kind of turn to the fall opening. And the focus of our discussion today, you know that we've been working on different plans about coming for, uh, coming to the fall. And how we will open school. And we've done a lot of research. We've read, I don't know how many articles, watched how many videos and talked to a whole lot of folks. Federal, at the federal level, at the state level and here locally, be it. Officials or medical experts, et cetera, as we're moving through this process. But the people that we really want to be able to get some input from are our people right here on the grounds with us. That depend on us the most and that's certainly going to be our families. So we, we did put a survey out to our families so that we could have an understanding of the things that they are concerned about. And what their intentions are for the fall as well as our staff. We do know that things will be different in the fall. And so what we want to be able to do, I'm going to have, Mrs. Sheard is going to walk through the survey. It's going to be a lot of data that he's going to be sharing. I will come back and summarize some of the information. Mr. Stuck will also be sharing where we are in the staff survey. And I'll be asking for your input to just kind of let us know what resonates with you in the survey? And what are you hoping that we are taking into consideration as we think about opening school in the fall? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you, Dr. Grover, and then thanks to the board for taking the time today to really understand what our surveys shown us. And how much we've learned and how it's going to apply. So our pandemic design team that Jennifer Worthington is leading includes John Hauser, Jose, Hosway. Kovar Rubius, Calvin Hubbard, Kelly Mayhew and myself. I got to thank all of them for their help in preparing the survey and doing some of the analysis that we've done together. So a little bit about the survey. There we go. We had a total of three thousand five hundred and eighty-nine responses. And you can see the breakdown there, a little over three thousand of them were English, a little over five hundred were Spanish. We sent this to parents via email, text and phone call on June, uh, June fourteenth, Sunday. It was opened through the Friday morning, June nineteenth, so. That's like six days ago that we've had this survey data. Took some special efforts to get all the schools up to about a forty percent or higher participation level at each of the grade breakdowns. Want to give special thanks to Dr. Amanda Lejos. I know she did some work to help recruit some Spanish-speaking assistants to get us going. Julie Schnitzler and her team at Howard were awesome. And all of our principals helped us promote the survey with parents. Howard, that numbers were a little lower than we wanted when we first started looking at the numbers roll in. So Julie and her team started actually calling parents. And Naris Schaefer and, and our own, our own Dr. Doll here also helped take phone calls in English and Spanish. To allow parents to take the survey in another way other than online. So we didn't do a paper survey, but we did offer another non-online version. As far as for all the data, not possible to go through all of this so fast without my thought partner in crime, Corey Gerhart. He helped me dig through the data much deeper than I could get as fast as he could. So he finds ways to get numbers, he's so valuable. So this is kind of how we ask things. We had a number of questions we asked, we broke it down by age group. So we asked, uh, because of our planning. And we know that it may be different by early elementary from late elementary, we broke it into two. So we asked questions, if you had a preschooler in GIPS this next fall. We asked if you had students in K two, three, five, six, eight, nine, ten and eleven, twelve. And we broke the high school in two because we thought there might be some differences. And when we see the results, you'll see that we were wise to do so because of significant differences in the responses. We asked some questions we're not going to focus on today, specifically about e-learning improvements. We'll get all that data that to Dr. Palmer. It wasn't really shocking results, mostly predicting, predictable actually. It was pretty consistent across all areas and age groups. The one outlier was at-home projects. They were not as helpful as a whole compared to some of the other areas of online learning, like whole class and small group instruction. Amongst some of those other e-learning ideas we asked about. Also preschool parents didn't find their kids, I didn't think their kids would work as well with online chat type in conversations. With their classmates as well as some of the older ages did. So again, some of it was predictable, but it was good to know and we'll get all that to Dr. Palmer. We're going to focus on the main points by school and grade level of these questions that we asked. If GIPS is permitted to open buildings with restrictions, will you send the GIPS students in your household? This is the big one, right? And it was after some debate on our end, it became, this is a yes, no question right now. So it's yes, I will be in, my kids will be in person? No, my students will utilize e-learning, cut and dry. Next question we're going to look at is which of these best describes your thoughts about wearing masks while at school? Now, in a moment, we're going to look at the difference in the results of students coming onsite in mask versus without masks. Remember, this is how we asked the question. We did not give an ultimatum. We did not say your options, options are only onsite with a mask or e-learning. So as we make decisions based on this data, let's understand how we ask the question. However, as you can see on the screen, we did give three different options before the one definite no. My students will not attend school if they're required to wear masks or facial coverings. So we're going to look at things really along the lines of the breakdown of those top three answers versus the fourth. We also asked a question about just some open, not open-ended, but multiple choices that they could click on any of these that applied. About the impact of not having kids in school can have on their household. I focused on childcare, the ability for the adults in the household to work or stay employed. And whether there was someone in the household who could help with e-learning at the times it was offered. And then the final question we asked was, do you have a way to get your students to and from school? Yes, I can do it, no, I need districts help. Those are the questions. All right, so before we jump into the actual results, I want to give you a look at what the key is. And all charts of, that I'm going to show you are on the same scale. So it's zero to a hundred percent of the student body of the group we're talking about. The width of the column, like this case, it looks really, really wide. That means nothing, that's just what can fit on the screen. But the height will be the same across all these charts. And at some points I might toggle back and forth so you can see how some of them move. That the purple, the dark purple, which we love purple, everybody looks good in purple, is yes, my students will attend school on campus in person. The light purple is yes, unless you make them wear a mask. And the black was no, my students will utilize e-learning. So, and the goal just tells you the level and again, it's percentage of the students that we're looking at. So the first one we're going to look at here is preschool. Things to note here, the three locations at elementary schools all were about ten percent higher than our ELC location. And you can see at each of these, I'll give you a little bit of time to absorb that. But again, that dark purple is the yes, my students will be there. And if you require a mask, they can be there, that's fine. The light purple is the ones that would be there if you don't require a mask. And that is those that are going to opt for the e-learning from home. At Lincoln and ELC, masks are about twice as more important or twice as much of an impact than at Howard and STAR. Howard, where we will have all-day preschool this year, had the highest scores. Just, just a little higher than, than STAR for being onsite, but very similar between the two. It is important to note about preschool that we have a waiting list. So we can theoretically backfill to get the class sizes we are wanting with the students that are on that waiting list. So this doesn't impact us so much, but it lets us know the, the thinking behind the preschool parent right now. So we're going to move on to elementary. This is just grades K through two, kindergarten through second grade. And you can see there are some, you know, that purple line, that dark purple line looks pretty consistent. It's about seventy to eighty percent across the board if masks are required. There are a few outliers, Wasmer is much lower than everyone else here. So that's, in that, that trend will stay on the next slide as well. I'm not sure what's causing that. I will say that we had at least forty percent participation at every level. Wasmer was forty by rounding it up. It was the lowest participation. As I went back and checked, I wanted to see why is that one such an outlier? It did have the least percentage of population respond to the survey. However, it is considerably lower here and it's response rate was not considerably lower. So I don't know if that impacted it, I just wanted to let you know that little bit. But this is considerably lower than everybody else. Shoemaker also sticks out here because of the impact that masks make. On the amount that would be in school, nineteen point one percent. So really the, you know, going from no masks to masks could triple the number of students opting to, to, to utilize e-learning. Rather than onsite. Engelmann has a large impact there as well and Wasmer, but again, not as much as the impact that Shoemaker. So we're going to move on to three, five, and I hope you don't get seasick here, but I. The charts are in the exact same spot for the schools and I want to toggle back and forth so you can see a little impact here. You can see each school difference, I didn't put them side by side because there'd just be too many. But you can see how it just jumps up and down. It's almost like my friend is a music producer and it's almost. Really like moving the slides up and down on all of the. On, on, on the soundboard, uh, when you see those things going up and down, in the sense that. It shifts in some up and some down. And the only true consistencies here between the two. Are that Wasmer is again the outlier and Shoemaker again has a big impact on the masks. So oddity there with Sealing Mile, they had zero percent that said, you know, a different answer really when we looked at it. If they're coming, they're coming, if they're not, they're not. The masks didn't have an impact at all here. So we'll move on to all of elementary and this gives you kind of the, the two together. And again, it moves them to glow, closer together. Wasmer, really, we have to take a look at the numbers there. That's the one that concerns us the most, just to have how far much, how much further down it is. We will compare all of elementary to the other levels, but you can see it, elementary-wide, it really starts to level out. All right, let's look at middle school. So the three middle schools are fairly. Alright, let's look at middle school. So the three middle schools are fairly consistent. Westridge is a tick higher, saying yes to school, but also masks have a bigger impact at Westridge than the other two campuses. About twice as big an impact. And on the right, you see Success Academy. The parents of Success Academy students overwhelmingly want their kids onsite. It is a bit different at the high school level for Success Academy, interestingly enough, and we'll see that slide here in a moment. But at the, at the middle school level, nine out of 10 Success Academy parents want their kids at school. And again, you can look, Westridge is somewhat in line with where Ingleman and Shoemaker were. Again, masks make a bigger impact at, at Ingleman than the other two schools. So let's move on to high school and a few more charts here. If you can't see it very well, the left side is freshman and sophomore at senior high. The second column is juniors and seniors. The next two are our two offsite campuses. Windout Learning Center and Career Pathways Institute, and then we've got Success Academy at the high school level and Ombudsman. So as I mentioned earlier, we split nine and 10 from 11 and 12 with the hunch that our hands-on CTE pathway classes may impact parents' decisions. And it did. About 5% higher expectation of attendance onsite versus e-learning when you compare 11th and 12th to ninth and 10th. And that's even more strong on the external campuses, Windout and Career Pathways Institute. Interestingly, the lowest impact of masks are these three right here that you see. And the high school Success Academy is right in there with the juniors and seniors at the senior high. But low impact of masks, highly wanting our kids onsite for those CTE pathway experiences. I mentioned the difference between middle school and high school Success Academy. Middle school was 91.7% in that dark purple range. One of the few examples that we'll see where older students opted for e-learning more than younger students. And I think that's probably got to do with the way that Success Academy has already instilled a e-learning mentality with some of their kids with the way they do the teaching onsite, which is probably prepared those students maybe more than the rest of our students for that environment. But this, that, that could be one reason that it's a little lower than the rest of the high school. Not a lot of numbers to go off of here for Ombudsman. There weren't a lot that took the survey. I have that screen covered right now to tell you the exact number, but there are not a lot of kids at Ombudsman, so the numbers have a correlation. These are the biggest impact of masks numbers across the district, also the lowest number of dark purple across the district. Let's look at the overall numbers. Going into the survey, we collectively predicted the percent opting for e-learning, the parents would select e-learning for their students would go up as the kids got older. And that didn't play out. The opposite is actually true. That the older the students are, the more likely the parents want them onsite in the classroom with direct instruction. You can see the K two and three, five are the shadows behind the, the elementary total. And you can see that they are right in line, right? K two, three, five overall, very close. The high school would do the same thing, and you can see the difference again between nine, 10, and 11, 12, which shows that gradual increase as we go left to right on this. The younger the students, up to the older the students, how that line just is consistent. And we can also measure the impact of masks. It gets smaller as students get older. And as we mentioned earlier, as a, as a whole, if we're going to go with the masks being required, you can see by these numbers, it will have an impact, and we'll be looking at approximately three out of four students onsite from what we normally would have. So those are the numbers of the yes, no, and masks that we've looked at. And I want to give you time for questions, but I want to get through this, and then we'll come back, and I'll be able to jump back if you have questions about specific slides. But let's move on to the, the other questions. And again, I want to remind you, the scale is the same as the previous charts. So what you see here is zero to 100, it's the exact same size here. There's just more columns to look at. This was the question, if access to childcare is an issue for our household, if school is not in session. And you can see the district average was 15.9%. Clicked on this. I'm going to guess that this might go against what some of us predicted, which schools would be above that line and which schools would be below that line. It certainly surprised some of us as we were looking at this data. Shoemaker, Ingleman were two of the higher ones. Staley's above that line. Lincoln and Canicrum, about where we'd expect them to be, but Howard being much lower. Now, obviously, some of the secondary locations, you know, childcare is not as important. But this would have been asked as a household, so if they had younger siblings, that's factored into that as well. Could be part of this is the number of two family, two, and two-income families in our community and needing childcare more, and that could be why, that's how our middle class works in Grand Island more often than, than not, probably. There's just a lot that we can look at here, just about the impact of childcare. The next slide looks at the question, e-learning impacts the ability for adults in our household to work or stay employed. Again, district average is 30, and you can see the schools above and below that line. E-learning impacts the ability for adults in our household to work or stay employed. We know that GIPS being in e-learning or being onsite impacts the community in many ways. But this is one that you can see those numbers are, are pretty high. 40% at some of our schools, 48% at Gates, 43 at Ingleman, 45 at Newell, 41 at Shoemaker, 40 at Staley Park, 32 at Westridge. So again, it's challenging the thinking a little bit about which schools we think of as the needs in some of these areas and the impacts. Next question is, no one in our household can help with e-learning at the times it is offered. And I know this is one that in our different models that we're researching and looking into, Dr. Palmer's team is looking at some of these things specifically. But pretty consistent across the district on this one. 26.8 is the average number of families across all the schools, so pretty close there. Alright, last question on the, the surveys that we're going to talk about that were questions. I need district-provided busing to get my students to and from school. So who needs district transportation? And this will be helpful for us in knowing a little bit about what routes are needed and the importance of those routes. District average was 5.7%, but you can definitely see Walnut Bar were, is pretty important there. Gish, a lot of students rely on it there as well. Starr, Canicrum, Jefferson, Howard. Big places for us to know that, you know, one out of 10 kids at those schools need us for transportation. ELC also high on that list. So we did have open-ended questions on this as well. We asked the question at the end, what else do you want to tell us, more or less? So I just want to go through some common themes and show a couple of examples of comments. One question that came or one comment that came on Facebook was, what are the chances you will actually read the comments parents write? I can tell you the answer was 100% the chances because of our team. Again, Jennifer, Kelly Mayhew, Hosway, John Hauser, Calvin Hubbard, and I, we split up and reviewed every comment and categorized them by a theme, and some fell into multiple themes. It was all subject to interpretation. But this is a good look at how the comments landed. The percent total is of those, of the comments, these are the percentages roughly that included a thought along that theme. So just to get a little bit of context. So 30% of the comments were along the theme of get the kids back in school. You know, here's an example, both parents work in our house, and we have two other children not old enough to school. Homeschooling is very difficult to complete in the evenings, since sometimes my wife, a nurse, works late at night. Please open schools for those of us willing to send our kids. There were a lot of comments very similar to this. Another big topic was health concerns. About 12% of our comments roughly were about health concerns. And some were fears about the safety and the health concerns in their family. Others were general health concerns, and still others like the one on the screen, ask questions about the process related to the health. And they were good questions, actually, like this one. We need to, we need to have an answer for this, whatever our model is for opening when we have kids in school. If school is in session and by chance there is one person infected with the virus, does the whole class go into quarantine? We got to be able to answer those questions. So that's valuable stuff from our parents. E-learning came in two categories. About 3% of the e-learning comments were positive. Some of them said like this, two of the three children in our house were more successful with e-learning than they were in class. And our third was equally, so if it's an option, we're going to keep our kids most likely at home. We knew we'd see some of this, right? We've talked about it. We said, you know, there's, some kids are going to thrive in this environment, and some, it's not their thing. Well, according to the comments, about 16% of them, that was, that was the case. E-learning negative responses showed how different the experience was for students and parents depending on the teacher or the class. Some really liked it. Some had pretty negative things to say. Others simply didn't think e-learning, e-learning worked for them as parents. So, you know, here's an example of one of those types of comments. They truly believe it will greatly impact the education of the children, learning from parents who are clearly unqualified to educate their children. As an aside, I think the marketing people of schools in general, when we hit this, kind of went over the top with, parents, you're going to be the teacher now. That's scary. As a non-teacher, I can tell you, I'm not qualified to teach. I'm just not. So it was a scary thing, and I think some of that messaging, and not just from us. I'm talking universally, schooling in general across the country. Hey, parents, now you're a teacher. You mean, you see the memes and you see the comments on Facebook. Hey, I, you know, I'm the teacher now. Lots of jokes about it. Teachers go to school to be professionals. It's an art. It's a skill. It's a science. And we kind of just said, we kind of threw that out, and we said, oh, parents, you're going to do this. You won't see us making that mistake. As a district, we know our teachers are teachers. Our parents are parents. We've asked them to help and partner in new ways, and we use that, that phrasing and terminology a lot. But by no means do we want parents to think they are the teacher. Because parents like me can't hack it, just can't. But I can partner with my kids as teachers to make sure they have me at home to help them make sure Calvin is paying attention to his class. I didn't want you to think we didn't pay attention to multiple languages here. So we did have Hosway go through every Spanish comment we had. Here's an example, and again, it was about e-learning. I think they, if they decide to leave them at home, classes must adhere to regular school hours for accountability, and that they are done by video conferences. But the learning of the student will not be the same, and many of us parents work, we will not be with them at the time of the classes. So many of them are left alone at home. I would like the school to reopen, taking all pertinent safety, safety measures. There were a lot of comments like that in English and in Spanish, that I want my kids to be safe. But we just don't think the education was the same for our household in e-learning as, as, as our teachers can give us. Obviously, masks is a big issue. About 10% of our comments were negative mask comments. I cannot see my children wearing a mask to school. If they cannot go to school normally, then I don't believe they should go at all. That was a common sentiment. So I've given you the numbers. I've given you some of the comments and some of that, just the feeling of it. That's the parent survey. We are also doing a staff survey, and I'm going to have Wayne explain more, but I do want to go through kind of how we're asking the questions there, and then he can give you kind of an update on where we are. So we asked staff, all staff, these questions, not just teachers, but all staff. What is your preferred work environment? Onsite, a mixture of remote and onsite, e-learning, or just remote and e-learning? We also asked staff the mask question, a similar way of asking it, which best, you know, explains your feelings. They prefer, prefer to wear one. They prefer not to wear one, but will reluctantly if asked, and totally neutral on it. Or no, I am not willing to wear a face covering and will likely look for employment elsewhere if expected to do. So that's the question on mask of staff. And the other main question we asked is, are you interested if the opportunity presented itself to modify your contract or schedule hours? And the question, the options here, I'm, I'm full-time, I'd be interested in doing part-time. I'm part-time, I'd be interested in going to full-time or more hours, or I'm not interested in making any changes. So I'm going to turn it over, Wayne, if you want to jump in here, that would be awesome to help explain more of that. And then Dr. Grover will give a summary, and then we'll answer all of your questions.
Yeah, thanks for the setup, Jack. You know, this is a, survey is a bit unique compared to some of the other surveys we do in that. Because we're using this to make some, this staff survey to make some, you know, firm decisions about staff assignments. We need to have as close to 100% participation as possible, because we can't just assume, you know, based upon a small sampling of who's available and able to work in, in various ways. Part of what we're trying to ascertain is, you know, what special accommodations do our staff need? We've received a little bit of pushback from the association on any questions related to disclosing any personal health types of situations, just because of, you know, kind of their, I guess, fear that that information might be used against staff down the road. So we had to be very strategic in kind of how we put the, the questions together. So the, the survey is still open. It's open until the third of July. So I don't have a lot of, you know, graphs and charts and things like that to, to show final results. But a little bit of information that I think is, is very positive. First of all, we are currently, we've got 1,064 responses, which is about 65% of our total staff. So we're making good progress towards getting all of that participation wound up. About 75% of our teachers have responded to the survey. So again, our teachers are giving us good feedback. Couple of pieces of information that I think is very positive. So far, it looks like something between seven and eight percent of our staff are going to request remote or offsite assignments, which would probably correlate to staff who have underlying health conditions that they're concerned for themselves or for family members. So, you know, when you see that we've got 20% of our students potentially are in the neighborhood of 20%, they're going to be requesting e-learning. You know, we have a very small number of staff. My worry was if we had, you know, 30% of our staff that requested remote only. And then, you know, we didn't have that many needs based upon our students. So the other thing that I think is encouraging is slightly over 40% of our staff so far of our teachers are open to either classroom or e-learning opportunities. So what that means is that we have some real flexibility with almost half of our staff as to which, what kind of assignments we give them. So, you know, that gives us the ability to assign staff really truly based upon the needs of our students and the needs of the organization as opposed to just, you know, individual personal preferences. So those are just a couple of things that I thought, you know, was, was positive. The numbers of staff, I don't have any numbers assimilated or assembled for this yet, but just a perusal visually of the responses, a very small number, just, I'm going to say like a small handful of staff have serious problems with wearing masks. You know, that option of saying, if I have to wear a mask, I'll probably look for another job next year. Just a very small handful of staff, so I don't feel right now amongst our staff that we're going to get tremendous, serious pushback. There'll be a few, and they could be very vocal, but as far as the majority of our staff, I don't feel that we'll get a lot of pushback there on wearing, wearing, wearing masks. So that's just a little preliminary feedback based upon about 64% response rate.
Alright, thanks, Mr. Stelk. Dr. Grover, you want to give a little bit of summary here before we open it up for questions?
Well, thank you, Jack. So thank you to the team, everyone for customizing. I do, do want to say that this survey was very much customized for Grand Island Public Schools. And they really did a great job of thinking about what information we needed to be able to guide our decisions here in Grand Island Public Schools. And so just maybe a few notes here. First of all, the reason why we are having the conversation First of all, the reason why we are having the conversation about fall re-entry or opening school in the fall is because we're in a global pandemic. I know that probably goes without saying, but it's, it's a constant reminder to us that as we're we know that we want our kids to be in school, right? And we're doing everything in our power to ensure that that happens and it happens in a safe way. And as we're making these decisions, we're also still having to take into account all safety measures that are needed for that, as well as we continue to watch and monitor how the pandemic develops across our country, but and how it develops here in Grand Island. And so I just want to keep that in mind as we are going through the information that this is not something that Grand Island Public Schools is trying to impose on our families, right? We know that we're dealing with a situation. And so as we look at some of this, the takeaways for us is that we know that we will, if we're able to open schools, there are still parents, for whatever reasons, that there will be reasons why parents would prefer to keep their students at home. So there would be opportunities for us to have students onsite. But that virtual option is still pretty much there, as you can see. That maybe overall about three out of four students will likely be onsite. That may be the worst case scenario. But depending on environmental factors, we would definitely see some of our students needing a remote opportunity. And so that would influence how we support our students with opening. Another thing for us to really think about with our e-learning, again, I'm very proud of how our staff members moved into e-learning. Let's just put things into perspective. We ask people to do something they've never done before in their life. They never thought about when they entered the field of education that they thought that they would be doing. And certainly life changed for our families as well. And we've already began to take some of that information. But some of what we heard through the survey being reinforced in a lot of different ways for us to think about with if we're going to do e-learning, if we're in that position, we have to think about things like attendance, grades, schedule, how we engage with our staff, a more or less having clear expectations that will lead to a more positive experience with e-learning. When we think about our parents, and so if you kind of go back to some of the findings, you know, childcare, which was interesting, that was about 15%. I think Jack called out some great points. I was thinking about that, too. You may have family members that are working, but maybe they don't have anybody in town that can take care of them. And where some of our other families, they may have a grandmother or something like that. So you can see how some of the older siblings, how those dynamics influence. But here, here's our takeaway. If you think about 15% of childcare, you know, anywhere around about 30% of people that their jobs would be impacted. And about 26, 27% of families who need help with e-learning. Again, these are not things that we are deciding. When we have to do a, an e-learning situation, you know, we're doing it because it is an emergency. But we also have to take into account, this is what is making me think about. We're going to have to get more innovative and we're going to have to look for partnerships about how we can support our families. 15% with childcare, you know, is that something for Grand Island Public Schools to start thinking about? What can we do on our end to help with it? And because we know people need to work. And the other part is e-learning. If there is no 26, 27% of our families, there is no one there to help the child with e-learning. Then what does support look like in those households? And so now we're down to the point where it's going to be about our individual lives. We have to get down to the individual student and we have to be intentional about the support as we move forward. So those are some of our takeaways. Transportation would be the other one. What the transportation was kind of shocking, right? That was probably one of the lower concerns, actually, out of all the other ones that we had to deal with. So we will, so we will probably be asking parents, if you can drive, if you can bring your students to school, we're going to probably ask you to do that. That'd be part of them helping us out because we know there will be some restrictions with how we transport students on our bus. So I'm just very pleased, number one, with our team that was working on this survey, the time and effort that they put into analyzing this data. This was outstanding, Jack and the rest of the team. As well as our parents' participation. This is the most participation and everybody else can back this up. I know since I've been here and probably in the history of surveys that we've ever had on any survey, parents are very much interested in our plans for the fall. So I will stop there and I will open it up to the Board of Education for questions and we will get the question routed over to the appropriate person depending on your question. Thank you.
I'll jump in. I don't know if any, if we need to raise our hands or whatever, but I, I just, I find this information fascinating. I, I got in a rather heated exchange on, on social media yesterday with a parent at a different school district. Well, actually, she's not even a parent. She's a grandparent at a different school district. And regarding their, it's LPS and I guess they have, they're, they're mandating masks or at least exploring that possibility. And wow, it, it just boggles my mind, the ferocity that some of these people don't want that happening. So I guess, you know, some of the points that, that this gal brought up and reiterated, you know, even went down the, the lines of filing lawsuits. Should, should their child be forced to, to wear a mask? Equated it to abusive bullying, child abuse by forcing a child to wear a mask. So I, I, I hope we don't have parents like that in our district, but they're out there, they're in LPS. And so I am so glad we've, we've, we've sought parent input prior to to laying out any groundwork for that. So the other thing that came up is, is that, you know, Governor Ricketts has, has sent down his edict as far as any requirement of face masks and, and a government entity. And it did come back in this discussion about schools being public government entities. So I, I guess I'll just throw that question out there. So thank you for doing the survey. Thank you for this data. It's going to be interesting to navigate this.
Yes, Mrs. Schuss. As we move into the fall, we know that we want to continue to engage with our families and whatever our fall plans are, we want to do a lot of education, sharing of information and helping people to really understand, you know, wherever we are in the decision-making process. And as far as the mask is concerned and with the governor, we did confirm with the Department of Education as far as our funding is concerned, that that does not include schools. So we, we don't have to worry about that at this point, as we know. Other questions, feedback, comments?
This is Bonnie, and I guess I just have a question. If we were to not require masks and then a child contracts COVID or a staff member, is the district liable for that?
You know, we, we've had a lot of discussions, ongoing discussions with attorneys. And I think one of the ways that we want to consider that, Mrs. Sinkle, as we are dealing with COVID-19 across our country, you know, the, there is huge, you know, potential that you may contract the virus, right? And so no matter what is going on, we know there are the mitigated measures that we have learned about and that we are encouraged from all of our officials. And that's one of the reasons that people are encouraging the waivers or at least some acknowledgement, you understand. And so, and this is, it, it makes me choke up just even have to think about it. How we talk about safety is so much different than what we've known within our environment. And what we can say is that we put in safety precautions. But the virus is rampant and we, and I don't have to explain it. Everybody is up to speed with that. But we will explain our safety precautions, but just coming into our environment, the same way that we're doing with the conditioning program at the high school. We did have parents to sign off on the waivers acknowledging what we're up against. And that they clearly understand that.
Okay, thank you. And so then a follow-up question, you just kind of mentioned the conditioning. I saw that the NSA said as of July 1st, sports can go back to normal, no requirements for anything. And so I'm assuming we'll do that for our students. And so we would have to get a waiver for all those kids that want to participate since there won't be masks required or social distancing or limited number of kids at this one place.
Yes, we will continue to enforce the waivers for our families. And, and I think that you know, what we probably want to do is to probably begin to think about where all do we need to just go ahead and have a statement about that? You know, probably just on our websites, at our campuses and so forth, since that's going to be part of what we know we're dealing with. Dr. Dexter, were you going to add something?
Yes, and just to July 1st, that's what the state sent out, but we're still in phase two. So we're still under 25 and groups. And then there's also the NSA guidelines, which the, under normal circumstances, there are only like football can only have helmets and pads one week and during the summer. We did make the decision not to have any camps where we invite other schools, districts in to participate. So we're really staying focused on the weights and conditioning and then sports specific skills and drills through the month of July. And then we'll reevaluate for August when we can have our back-to-school practices start up.
And, and the other thing to note about that, we're still training everybody on the mitigated measures. Dr. Dexter mentioned, you know, the ban. And so that doesn't go away. Those mitigated measures and some of it is just to what extent can you do them? Like when you start talking about like the social distancing, but like the hand washing and sanitizing, the cleaning, all of that, we will continue to do.
If, if we require masks, are we providing them and, and have we ordered them yet? Or, or what's, what's the status of that?
First, you, you may want to talk about the status of all the masks you've acquired.
I am the mask acquiring king of central Nebraska. We have about 60,000 masks on hand. We are asking for another 50,000 from the governor's hunt, 1.5 million he has in a warehouse in Omaha. So I think we're going to have masks covered. Now, I won't say that it's going to meet everybody's like, hey, this is the best mask ever kind of thing. So we're working on getting a lot of different masks for different purposes. N95s for nurses. You know, maybe mask with the mouth covering plastic. So kids that are maybe deaf or hard of hearing could see the lips of the person instructing them. Face shields, face coverings is probably the thing we're working on. So we're going to have a lot of things out there. How long it'll last and how well it'll happen, who knows? But we definitely will have masks for everybody to some extent.
Mr. Mr. Harden, does that also include the acquiring of oodles of hand sanitizer?
Funny, you should ask while we've been on our retreat, I just instructed Kim Grimm to acquire 250 gallons additional hand sanitizer from the ESU through ESU 10. I think we already got 120 gallons plus everything we've bought. So we might actually have more hand sanitizer than we could possibly use, but oh, well, it doesn't go bad.
Thank you for all the work that has been done. I know that with Heidi, this, the mask thing has been, I think, what people, I know a couple of people approached my wife and just said, you know, they were very disappointed on GIPS and they're looking to see what they're going to do if we require a mask. And one of the things that, you know, my wife has encouraged people, the same as me, is we want to hear from me. We want to hear from you as a parent. We want to hear from you as in the community. So I think this survey is great. You know, my concern continues to be that it's just there's so being a election year, there's just so much going on. We're getting polarized on many things and we're not listening. And, you know, culturally, I know other countries that this is just the norm and it has nothing to do with health. You know, nurses have worn masks for 12-hour shifts, but there's some, regardless where we stand in this spectrum of how real COVID is or not, you know, I don't know how we can do better at sending a message to parents that are on both sides of the spectrum to say, and, and our staff too, because they're also on that side of the spectrum. We all have a very valid experience, but how can we drive the point of, can you partner with us? You know, I wear the mask to take care of my kids, my parents and others, because we love our community. We love others. So even, you know, when that bridge comes that we're going to talk about masks, I think sending out the survey and hearing from parents, you know, I don't know, there's a way to, if there's a way that we can say, hey, we did this and this is what we've heard and we're following up. And, and I know we're doing a live or this is being streamed. For anybody that is listening, you know, I would, I would challenge and encourage you to to sit down with us and to encourage and to support the work that we're doing. Because we are trying to do the best that we can with what we have in the situation that we're in. And we respect that there's different points of view and feelings. And it's not an easy situation, but don't, how can we partner through getting through this? So I think we need to continue, not only the school district, but also the community to help everybody just pause and say, you know, how do we make it better? And yes, there are those feelings on both sides of the, of the coin. How do we put it out there more so that people know we're doing our research, we're doing our work and we'll cross the bridge when we get there. But we're definitely, for those that are watching the stream live or might see it later, we're, thank you all, GIPS administrators, all the staff for what you've done, all the teachers for adapting. You know, I think if we go into a mix of virtual and live, we need to have our best people at the front of e-learning so that kids can get the best they can. Is it going to be the same as live? Who knows? But that we're trying the best that we can because we are committed to our mission. We are committed to our community. So thank you.
I'm just going to jump on that a little bit. I'm just, normally you guys know me, I'm a data person and I would say, you know, we looked at this study, we've talked to, Dr. Rauner is, is on the GI or the LPS board. So they have, they have data at their fingertips and, and these studies. It doesn't make a difference to some of these people. You can, you can drive those studies and that information home. Some people are just going to have their mindset differently. And to Carlos's point, we need to be able to deal with that to, to learn how to navigate through those discussions.
Were there any other questions or there's Mrs. Gordamaker?
Yes. Um, I was just wondering if we've had any communication with any of the testing capacities about whether we would be able to test at a school if a kid came up symptomatic.
Dr. Dexter, are you on here? I don't want to overspeak from the, the nurses conversation that's not part of the protocols that we've been moving through. But Dr. Dexter, you want to add?
What was the question?
Whether or not we're going to do any of the testing onsite.
No, and Central District Health Department strongly advised against that. We're to refer to their physician for testing.
We do know that we would want to have an isolation room for a student that we have concerns about as we partner with the medical folks to assist a student or a staff member.
Gotcha. The other question I had was, I listened to Dr. Rauner's thing this morning and it sounds like it got pretty heated at the LPS board meeting. And I was wondering if we need to start crafting some kind of a statement from medical community about masks. It sounds like they had one in LPS. Even though I know it doesn't really make a difference for some of those folks, but just didn't know if that was something we wanted to think about.
Yes, thank you for that. We had a meeting with the Central District Health Department this morning and that is one of the things that they are hoping to convene an opportunity with the school districts and the medical folks to start some information sharing, to kind of have a forum where we can put some of that out. And I do think that we'll be working along with our communications team with some of that education, Mrs. Gordamaker, out in multiple ways. And, and our medical community has already agreed that they would be willing to assist us with that. These are all great questions. Any other questions, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
How are you today?
Not good.
I noticed you were a little quiet. You know, I wasn't going to let you get away with that. So what's on your mind on this topic?
Well, A, I'm not going to get involved in whether to wear a mask or not, because it, again, it's all over the board. You're not going to get a, there's not a solution there one way or the other. You know, obviously, if you, you know, for those of us who err on the caution side, you know, we You know, obviously, if you, you know, for those of us who err on the caution side, you know, we wear masks because we think we should. But as far as the school goes, I guess the question I did have is what, what happens if we have a student turn up positive? What is our, do we have a procedure in place to know what the exposure would be to other students? Do we have something already in place for that? Has that been discussed?
Well, I would say to that question, again, that was a question we had on the call today. We have learned that, you know, back in March when we had a case, it was basically, you know, shut everything down, close the doors. We don't foresee that being the case when we go forward here in the fall. We are working through some scenarios of what that might look like. And as we share information with our families and go forward, we will have some of those scenarios put together for that. And, you know, even with the Central District Health Department, they are hoping that they can put some things in writing for us. But we will have to partner along with them as we notice the cases, whether it's by classroom, it's by grade level, it's by building this across the district as we move forward.
And we do have a process that we use for like when a student's identified with tuberculosis or pertussis. I mean, we pull a team together. We before had to go through and identify everywhere that kid was and who they were in contact with. Corey's working with synergy to have a system in place where that can do it for us. So we have some similar plans in place, but like Dr. Grover said, working with Central District Health Department to say, is it one, is it two, is it three? How do we make that decision?
Is there any thought to checking temperatures on a daily basis?
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion about that. And so whenever we roll out the plans with our families, we'll be able to explain what that process would look like depending on the situation that we're in. But yes, Virgil, again, you know, Virgil is just really getting his hands on some supplies. I can say that he's already ordered a number of devices that we'll be able to use and that we will have at our disposal to support us with checking temperatures.
So as of today, we have one thousand no-touch handheld thermometers for every teaching staff member and support staff as necessary.
So I've seen some chatter on social media about e-learning and people exploring other avenues of e-learning and, you know, or homeschooling or whatever. And so I just wondered if, and I don't think the survey probably went that deep as far as if people were not gonna send their kids if they had to wear a mask or whatever. If the e-learning that they would do would be provided by us or provided by someone else. But I think that it might be important for us to communicate with families about, you know, what we learned about e-learning and what our future plans are. Because for those that felt that their children were not engaged or they weren't happy that we weren't grading things or whatever, you know, those things might make a difference if they're gonna continue e-learning with us or try the homeschool route.
Yeah, that is so critical. And so I'll just say to our families, and this would be something that we would stress going forward. You know, if and when we're ever in the e-learning environment, you know, don't, don't judge us just basically on the experience that you had back in March. You know, again, we know it was positive for some people, but for people who struggle with it because we learn a lot with that and there would definitely be more structure. And so I think that that's part of, you know, the parents, they answered this survey and a lot of their comments is based on the experience that they had. That's all they know right now. And so we will have to do a great deal of letting them know how things will be different in e-learning. So thank you for saying that, Mrs. Ink. And so for all of you all that are on the Facebook and, you know, you do engage if you do or you see things, let us know. I know that I saw, I think Jack, our team, they kind of responded to a few things that are out there on our Facebook page. And so as we go forward, we want to do more education along those lines. Okay, well, I certainly do not want to stifle any of the discussion. This is great information. I think we're up for a five-minute stretch break. This is a five-minute break. And so let's just come back at three fifty-five and we will be on the home stretch of our retreat. I'm just giving everyone an opportunity to, okay, there's Mrs. Appers. Okay, I think we have everyone here. And so for our last formal presentation for today, we do have Mrs. Wells, our athletic director, joining us today along with Dr. Dexter. And we will be talking about just ideas and possible actions as we look towards the future of athletics. Dr. Dexter?
Okay, Mrs. Wells and I are gonna tag team this a little bit. And we have, we want to talk about the future of soccer at the middle schools and just how do we fund that, continue to fund it. And then we want to talk about thinking forward with middle school athletics. And right now we have Everybody Plays and we've done a lot of work to have an ABCD league so that everybody has an opportunity to participate in a game. But when we brought our coaches together and activities directors, we really posed the question of do we need to be more of a competitive program at the middle schools? With respect to making sure every kid gets to be engaged in activity through intermurals, after-school programs. We also wanted to focus in on how do we get fourth and fifth graders engaged and how do we keep sixth graders engaged until they could be a competitor at the seventh and eighth grade? So we brought a team together and had just some really great discussion about, you know, if then and what. And our, our vision moving forward, I'm gonna let Cindy talk about the why we see the need to consider moving to a competitive league at the middle school level. So Cindy, do you want to start?
You bet. Thank you and good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, the discussion started when I was working with our high school coaches. At the end of the season, I bring them in and we do an evaluation and a lot of the concern was, I think we need to change maybe our philosophy of our middle schools and start adding some fourth and fifth grade and especially sixth grade plans to start developing our kids with fundamentals and skills. I know when we transitioned from six to eight and then nine to twelve, I think the vision was that everybody in the middle schools, we would do something in the seventh and eighth grade so that everybody could participate. They were worried about maybe some kids getting lost and not, you know, being able to participate in sports and fine arts. But I look back now and that's almost twenty-two years ago. And I think things are changing. Kids are, you know, starting to specialize in some sports. And so when I met with the middle school ADs, Dr. Dexter, I took, you know, kind of a plan down that back in the day, we had, it was called a Bonanza. And that's when we used our upper elementary kids, it was a fourth, fifth and sixth graders. And we would focus on volleyball, basketball, and we did jump roping back in the day. And I don't know if Dr. Bros, if you remember, I think maybe Aaron and Adam might have been a part of that. But it's been a few years ago that we did establish the Bonanza. So what we did was our elementary PE teachers, they would either work with the kids in the morning or after school for about an hour and we'd just teach the basic fundamentals of volleyball skills. Our, I was the volleyball coach then. I would go down to the elementaries. I would help the coaches learn how we want to train our kids, what things were important, just to keep it, we wanted to be fun, but also to start working on the basic fundamentals so that we could get our kids ready when they got into the middle schools and then really being able to compete at the high school. So talking with that, we thought, well, if we start with the fourth and fifth graders and start working with our PE teachers there and building that volleyball, basketball, and we might even include maybe soccer. Because we currently already have a run club for our elementary kids. So we already have that established. We have a youth football league that we have almost four hundred little kids that play youth football on Saturdays and Sundays at senior high. But what could we do to get more kids involved in just learning the basic fundamentals? And at this time in the sixth grade, we have nothing for our sixth graders. So if we start with the fourth and fifth graders, you're gonna have to have something in the sixth graders so that we can keep the fundamentals and keep building on the skills. And what we would do with the seventh and eighth graders, and I, I totally agree that, you know, we need to do something. I don't want kids to get cut and stuff like that. But sometimes I've gone over and I've watched when Carney, Hastings, Columbus and some of these other schools come and play our middle schools. They don't have a C and D league. So our C and D teams are playing some of their As and Bs. And it breaks my heart when I sit there and watch our little girls' basketball team get beat fifty-two to two. And I know they're competing, they're working hard, but I'm just thinking, what are we doing to these kids and then putting them back on a bus? Or how do you talk to them afterwards when they score two points and the other team is scoring fifty points against you? We also, you know, think that maybe what we could do is continue, we would keep the A and B teams, but we're gonna make them more competitive. And you guys all know that we have parents out there that they are getting their kids in USVBA. They are getting and traveling basketball. So the parents that really want to see their kids excel are doing, they're going to the club venue and coaching the kids and using their own expenses to do that, which is fine if they want to continue to do that. But I would like to see our seventh and eighth graders be a little bit more competitive, take our skilled athletes and make them better so that we can get them prepared better to come into the high school. And with that said, you know, winning breeds success. And that's what I want as the activities director. I want to see our teams be very competitive and I want them to be successful. Because I don't want to lose kids to other districts because they can say, you know, how competitive they are. And so that's kind of always been my goal as the activities director coming in four years ago that I'd really like to bring back. How do we develop our fourth, fifth and sixth graders to get them interested in the athletics? And then the seventh and eighth graders really gear down on what it takes to be competitive. What are we gonna do to get our kids ready for high school? And, you know, our football team is a great example. Winning breeds success and we get a lot of kids that want to come over because of the successful program that we have with Coach Tomlin and his coaches, how hard they worked to build that program. And I want to see my other programs being as successful as our football program. So with that, Dr. Dexter, is there anything else? You know, what I appreciate about this is that our middle school ADs, you know, we're all talking, getting on the same page and, and going from there.
And so that's one bullet point. And so I'm gonna work through the bullet points and then we'll open it up for large group discussion. The next one is for consideration and discussion, funding boys and girls soccer at the middle school level. And Virgil, do you want to address? And Virgil, do you want to address the funding situation?
Yeah, I sure will. Just as a reminder, Dr. Grover's first year, she got approached by some middle school students to add middle school soccer. And so we've kind of put our heads together and at that time, point in time, I should say, we went ahead and moved money from the general fund to the activity fund to fund the initial startup cost and three years worth of the coaching expenses for that program. And we ran out of three years or up. And so the question becomes, and you heard some of this in Mr. Stelk's report on extra standard recommendation. I think his printout there gave you some dollar amounts on what the coaching cost for that would be. And so the question is, is the board willing to absorb that cost into the general fund? Or do you want to try to approach it some other way?
So that's the second point for consideration. And then as just like soccer, we have a group of girls who are very persuasive and interested in having girls wrestling at the middle school level. We do have kind of an informal club wrestling and so girls have been participating in that. But the issue is then, when they become, go to the high school, we do not have a girls wrestling program. So that's another bullet point for middle school. And then Cindy talked about how do we engage for sure, fourth and fifth graders to get those beginning skills really addressed and get them hooked on volleyball or basketball or football. So that's that bullet point. And then the GISH additions, bowling is now a sanctioned sport at the high school. We need to decide if we want to implement bowling at the high school. As well as girls wrestling's not there yet, but we have several schools in Nebraska that are implementing that. And Cindy, do you want to address bowling and girls wrestling?
Yes, I sure can. And that's what I worked on today. There was a proposal a year ago for, to implement high school bowling into a sanctioned sport. And this year the NSA did pass that it would become a sanctioned sport. And so I worked on it today with some other schools. And I know Hastings is going to go ahead, in fact, it has to go to their board for approval. But they have put together a, what it would cost and how are they going to go about doing this? I know Lexington is going to do it, North Platte's going to do it. But right now the NSA, by September 1st, all schools had to do a survey whether we would be implementing high school bowling. And after working on the, with the salaries and everything like that, and I worked with Westside Lanes already, just to kind of get their fill because they're the only bowling alley we have left in Grand Island because Super Bowl did close. And so Westside Lanes is very willing to work with Northwest and Senior High on practice times. I did have a school reach out to me in the area, ask if we would be willing to co-op. So that, because they don't have bowling alleys in their small towns. So that would be something else. But after working through a couple of the schools today, they're looking at approximately about $20,000 is what it will take to probably implement high school bowling. But the NSA really has not come out yet with the specific guidelines. That's what schools will be responsible for in, in paying for different things. But of course, like you guys know, we'll have to pay for transportation. Westside Lanes has maybe indicated that they would not charge us rent because they would really like to have our kids out there. They really would like to have a high school bowling team. And like Dr. Dexter said, it has been a club sport and our kids have been very successful. Our girls have won the state tournament three years in a row. And colleges are now starting to offer scholarships to high school kids for bowling. So with that said, it's just, I'm working on it to just kind of get the feel of what it would cost the districts and what we would be responsible for.
And Cindy, do you want to get some history on girls wrestling?
Yes, on girls wrestling, this year the NSA did have a girls mini state tournament at York High School. And I was really shocked about the number of girls that participated at the high school level at that tournament. So I know that it's this year, you can implement it, but it is not a sanctioned sport required by the NSA. But like Dr. Dexter said, I'm sure within the next two years, it will be a sanctioned high school sport. Lots of interest in the middle schools. I think I really enjoyed visiting with the girls. I went over and talked to them about the why and the purpose. And, you know, they, they don't want to play basketball, they want to wrestle. And so we talked about that. I did have one girl come up from the eighth grade last year to her freshman year this year. And, and I think it was, she was the only girl, so the interest wasn't there for her. And I, we didn't really have any, she couldn't wrestle anybody because I'm not letting the girls wrestle the boys and, and there's going to be, you know, different guidelines for the girls. But like I said, it's coming and our girls want it. So that'll be another thing we'll have to look at.
So Dr. Grover, I'm watching the time. We wanted to for sure lay this out on the table, just so that you're aware that it's in discussion and, and we want definitely to get your input. But I don't know about time and where you want to go from here, Dr. Grover.
Well, I'll kind of lean on Mrs. Hinkle here. We were originally scheduled to five o'clock, we just really tried to aim for 4:30. But Mrs. Hinkle, how would you like to proceed with the discussion around athletics? What do you think is the best way to handle that?
Well, I think since we're just hearing it now and I'm sure a lot of people are having questions, I think we should go ahead and allow some of that discussion to take place so we don't lose our thoughts. And maybe we take it point by point. It feels like maybe the most pressing one, and I could be wrong, Dr. Dexter and Mrs. Wells, you can tell me, but the funding of the boys and girls soccer in middle school feel like that's the most important one to talk about?
That would be, yes, top on the agenda.
Okay, and so I guess I would just ask board members to weigh in on that if we feel like that's something we want to continue to pay for, thinking about equity.
This is Lisa. I think we have to keep soccer. I remember when we added that and I was driving down Stolly Park and I saw these two kids, they each had a soccer ball. They obviously were walking from bar and they were laughing and they were kicking their soccer ball. And I think I even called Dr. Grover that day because it just was so impactful to me. So I will sell plasma, I don't care. I think we have to keep soccer, whatever we need to do to try to keep soccer.
My gut reaction seems to be.
Go ahead, Carlos.
Just, I think it's important, we're talking about all these opportunities and we're talking about offering and make it a competitive, we're talking about. So I think it's important and at the same time, I just also, it's important, how do we keep looking into finding more money and finding different, that we keep looking at the future of the how. I'll also sell plasma with Lisa, but I think it's important.
Yeah, sign me up for my donation time too. Because I, I think, I mean, we, we went down this road knowing we'd, we'd have to cross this bridge. And I, for the same reasons, we're looking at making the other sports more competitive. Why would we cut soccer and then still try and have a high school soccer team? So it, it makes no sense to cut it at this point. It gives those kids a connection and I'm 100% behind soccer.
Well, and I know that the soccer program suffered this spring for middle school. And I had one grandson who was really disappointed because he never got on the soccer field. So yeah, I think we need to keep it.
I would agree.
Me too.
So I think that's something that, oh.
That's okay, I kind of paused a long time. Me being a very sports minded person, I love all of it. And just feel that the more connected we can get kids and the earlier we can get them connected, the better off we're going to be.
Okay, on the soccer, I think we can have Virgil bring that to the financing facilities committee kind of so you can know what he's up against and what, what that means as far as the budget is concerned. And we can talk through the how. And probably the next one, Dr. Dexter, would you agree would probably be the competitive sports? Did you need that for this fall too, or where would you like to go?
Um, I think it should be bowling.
Bowling, okay.
And Cindy, can you talk, talk about what season it is and is it boys and girls?
Yeah, and the season right now, from what we proposed to the NSA was, we wanted to make it a winter sport. But it would probably start in, it'd be in November and then go till the end of February. So it would be a winter sport, it would be boys and girls sport. And like I said, we do have a facility here in town that are very willing to work with us. And if, you know, if you guys think that I should co-op with like a Wood River, a Dona Fun, a Central City or, you know, that do not have the bowling facilities, that'll be a discussion that we can have. But the NSA does allow us to co-op with other schools as well.
And Cindy, we, we plan to continue unified bowling?
Oh, definitely, yep.
So I have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Dexter.
And the unified bowling is students with disabilities and bowling with students without disabilities and.
Yes, yep.
So I have a couple of questions. The first one I have is, if we, we already have bowling as a club sport, do kids have to pay for it currently or how is it being funded as a club sport? And will it, you know, are we just replacing the cost of the club with the cost of the actual sanctioned sport?
Yeah, and right now what happens is the parents are paying, just like it'd be volleyball, basketball, the parents are paying for their kids to be in club, in club bowling. And so it would be no different than the USVBA Islander hoops or anything like that.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I'm okay co-opping with other schools as long as that doesn't mean some of our kids don't get the opportunity because of lack of space.
Yeah, and the only reason I, right, I'm sorry, Bonnie. The only reason I asked about the co-op is because I know we co-op with other schools because we only have one baseball field, one swimming pool. And so, but I would hope that, I, I really believe we're going to have enough kids from our own school that will be very interested in the bowling. But I just, I wanted you guys to know that other schools had reached out to me and asked what we were going to do. And I also suggested to them that maybe they work together to co-op and work with Westside Lanes.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
Cindy, do you see a need to get this implemented in this coming November or give it another year to plan?
Well, I'm going to tell you, since the NSA put it out there, we will have parents probably asking why we did not make it a sport this year when we have done other sports. So I would love to see it happen this year. But like I said, I, I do not know right now what the Lincoln Public Schools or how many other Class A schools will be doing this. I will have a better answer of that September 1st, when the NSA puts out the schools that want to do it and, and we'll go from there. But you know, what I'm proud of, our kids will keep doing the club if we don't get it going. And if we can at least tell them that, you know, maybe in another year it will happen. But I just don't want you guys getting phone calls from parents saying, well, it got sanctioned and if this would have been this and this, why wouldn't it have happened? So I think we just need to make a statement if we're not going to.
Cindy, what's our participation level as a club sport?
It's pretty high, in fact, they, and the thing is, you can have seven kit girls. It's a seven member team, but you can have three or four different teams within that. And I really believe we would have probably four girls teams and maybe three boys teams. But right now, you know, we have wrestling, we have basketball, we have swimming for, and I think that's why maybe the boys, because they're doing those sports already, but we do have a few, but we have more girls that aren't swimming and don't play girls basketball.
Do you have somebody in mind to, to service the pro?
Yeah, you, no. No, but you know, I've been really satisfied with the club coaches. And we've communicated, because this was the first year that I did take out letters of cert, certificates to the bowlers, because I just felt like, you know, they're wearing Islander bowling shirts. So they really are, you know, people think it's really neat that our kids wanted Islanders on their shirts. They wanted to represent our school. And so we made a big deal out of the state tournament and took letters out to them. And, and it was a really special moment. So our, the coaches that we have do a great job. But I would also want to reach out to our staff to see if anybody would be interested. I really like having our coaches as employees of the district. But if not, if we don't get the interest, we do have people in our community that are very willing to help.
I think bowling touches on a whole, whole different group of kids than a lot of these other sports do. Basketball and wrestling and that, so, so I'm, I'm on board with it.
So take it to financing facilities? Do we need to go extra standard weighing?
I guess, you know, I haven't heard any numbers as far as what kind of costs are associated with it. So I would think maybe financing facilities is going to have to weigh in on, you know, whatever that addition. Just like, you know, the middle school soccer is going to be $51,000 and some odd cents. We'll need to know what, what the bowling would be. And then, you know, that's going to have, those dollars have to come from somewhere. So I would think first would be facilities and finance. But Virgil, if that's backwards, weigh in.
I was having trouble hearing you, Wayne. Are you asking me the fiscal impact?
Well, the question is, you know, where do we go from here? I haven't heard what kind of dollars we're talking about. Typically, you know, when we have large requests come before the extra standard committee and there's no, you know, previous funding source or it's not within the current extra standard budget, you know, we've got to identify if, you know, if we can identify, you know, have those dollars assigned to extra standard. So I guess I'm thinking we need to know what the total cost of the bowling program is going to be. And then maybe, you know, go to facilities and finance and talk about where the funding would come from. And then, you know, from there, go to extra standard.
Well, the extra standard recommendation already went in front of the board. So I'm trying to remember if they, it's just to info. So yeah, do we have any idea what the proposed costs are going to be for the activity? I thought I heard 20,000, but I wasn't sure if that was on.
I can tell you what I worked with this morning with a couple of the ADs. And what we kind of came up with, it would be between 11,000 and 14,000. But that did not include the transportation because we do not know, you know, who's all going to be impl, I mean sanctioning us. So, you know, the cost of the transportation, but, you know, we would buy the, you know, the kids their shirts. And, but most of the kids have their own bowling balls. And then the Westside Lane said that, you know, that we would just rent the kids' shoes out there. And then we would have to pay, you know, what it costs to bowl. And then of course, pay for the female coach and the boy, the. Um, and then, of course, pay for the female coach and the um boy, the male coach, uh because we would need two coaches. So I think it's the transportation, the coaching is probably going to be most of the expense.
I have a quick question on that, though, but in order to um have equity and access, we are going to have some students that don't have a bowling ball. May, if we offer this and it suddenly comes up, and this is a great opportunity for them to um get to experience, that is something that we'll need to take into consideration as well.
Right, and West Side Lane said that, you know, they have the stuff that they would rent. And so I would sit down with them and say, okay, practice, um, you know, what would it cost? And so I could get all of that from them. Uh but like I said, I just, I really have not done a lot of that with the West Side Lane shit because I was waiting till we presented this.
Yeah, I think uh I think the best strategy on the budget side of things, um assuming we have interest from the board, is to move forward with putting um a tighter budget together. I think Cindy's got ninety percent of it, just has to wrap up a few things, take that through FNF. Um, you know, we've already met for the July, so um, you know, the extra standard would be approved um in July. Um, if we want to, you know, it's certainly below a dollar threshold authority that we currently have. So we could just run it through FNF and maybe report out through the committee report to the full board.
Right, and you know, and I think also we'll have a better answer September 1st from the NSA. I mean, if it comes down to um Hastings and Lexington and North Platte and us doing that, um, the expense will probably not be as much, but we'll have a better idea of how many schools are going to implement high school bowling.
Okay, so we have a plan to move forward with bowling. Um, I suggest we go back to some discussion on middle school competitive sports. And and all this, when, I think I was first here, when we um really pushed for all kids participate, we added coaches so that it could be an A, B, C, D league. Um, and what coaches are telling us is that by the time you practice and find space for A, B, C, and D teams, and then you have games for A, B, and C, and D teams, um it really is taking time away from that, um, the the competitive seventh and eighth grade team. So just kind of running out of time and space. Um, still some discussion on, we want to keep kids engaged in physical activity, um but really seeing the need to um concentrate on those competitive seventh and eighth grade teams. So that's the change and kind of where we've been.
So my comments on this would be, I think that it's important to be as competitive as we can be in seventh and eighth grade and maybe utilize sixth grade, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade as um learning the skill, having it more relaxed, having it um that way. And then in seventh and eighth grade, um try out. Um, and you either make it or you don't make it. But I would love to be able to have an intramural type situation for those kids that are interested in doing, you know, participating but may not be at that level yet as well. So, and I know that all takes people to be there to sponsor and run that. So um, but that would be my thoughts.
I I think that's a good solution in keeping, keeping kids engaged and keeping them involved and being able to do that while still maintaining the competitiveness. Um, I I worry about kids not being able to experience it. So if if we're going to go more competitive, I I think the exchange for that is doing some of those um fourth and sixth grade um learning and and getting those kids hooked and in. Um, I think without that, I I don't know that I I fully support going competitive. I I think it's a trade-off. I think to go competitive, we also have to focus on the fundamentals at the younger ages.
I'm struggling a little bit. Um, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, I'm struggling a little bit with um, you know, there's so many travel teams in elementary school for baseball and for uh and basketball and volleyball. And and I, and I hate to say this, but I even almost wonder if fourth grade is soon enough. Um, because uh if you think about like when the Y used to start doing the fundamentals of volleyball and stuff, it was, and I'm sure that could be covered in PE, but it was even like second and third grade. And and then I worry about equity because then we have some of these kids that can pay to go on these travel teams because it's not cheap. Um, and I just, I just want to make sure that uh by opening this up in elementary school, which I think is a great idea, that we're, it's actually going to allow us to include more kids instead of um how I feel like it's limiting kids now that have a tendency, if they've done the travel leagues in grade school into middle school, that um they have more tendency than to be on the competitive teams in high school. And I think what we're trying to get at is to open this up to to really see what kind of talent we do have if we can start it earlier. And so that's, I mean, I I'm fine with the idea, I just am struggling with that portion of it a little bit.
Yeah, and the the team really wanted to start at seven, second grade and with after-school staff. So, but they thought, okay, if we at least start at fourth and fifth, that'll be a start. And then the whole piece of them being able to participate in the Bonanza that Cindy talked about uh Saturday where they could have a in-district tournament, you know, with with the different elementary schools. So and they get to have that at senior high and just, you know, get kids hooked.
I didn't grow up in Grand Island, but I have heard many, many people my age talk about their fond memories of their, the Bonanzas that were held um at senior high. And I can tell you, while I grew up in Miller Public Schools and we kind of had the kind of the same thing, each elementary kind of did their deal. And then at the end of the season, we'd all come together for a day of basketball, volleyball, whatever the sport was. And, you know, it was just, it was pretty low-key, but, well, I'm a little competitive, but so low-key is relative. But um, but it was great and it gets those kids in that competitive spirit and gives them an opportunity to experience something that they might not otherwise be able to experience anywhere else. And I do think that it does open up the opportunity for kids who can't be on traveling teams, et cetera, to to gain some of those fundamental skills. Um, but I know as having a daughter who grew up through the volleyball ranks, et cetera, the success of those teams was kind of about who your coach was and how vested they were and how much they knew about the sport and all of that. So it opens up a whole can of worms about how do you make sure that you have people that are vested in it because they're probably not getting paid anything. And, you know, because I think that that's a lot of what happened at the Y was that they just couldn't get people to volunteer as coaches and all of that. And so it kind of went down the tubes, so um, so anyway.
Yeah, and Kelly, and with that, yeah, it was the high school, it was myself and the assistant coaches, we're the ones who did the, we called them little diggers. And um, and we're the ones who, you know, we did it in the springtime because then it didn't interfere with our fall or winter. And um we would come up to the high school and set up our nets and we'd go from nine o'clock on a Saturday morning till three o'clock and just have fun. Lower the nets for the uh, and back then, Lisa, we did have second graders and it was really fun. And we just lowered the nets for them and use volleyball lights. It was really a, it's a neat deal. But um, yeah, I totally agree, you know, we have families that just cannot afford this traveling stuff and I feel like maybe their kids are being left out. So the expectation too is that our high school coaches, it will be part of their duties is to go down and help train the PE teachers. And um, you know, Ryan Hansen and the elementary PE people, they're excited about this. And we'll train them how it needs to be taught, just work on the basics and then um, you know, come to the high school and and let them play. We have three gyms and just, it'd be a great weekend. And if we go six weeks, we used to do six weeks of volleyball and then did six weeks of basketball and six weeks of jump rope. And um, because the Kogels were the jump ropers, but we figured if the, those kids could jump rope and do everything the Kogels wanted them to do, boy, they were coordinated to do about anything. Um, but I I would like to see, you know, we don't do a lot of jump roping anymore, but bring in soccer. You know, if we're going to have middle school soccer, then let's get these um, these fourth and fifth graders and sixth graders ready for that. And um, so it's it's just something that really excites me for our community and for our kids.
And a prime example of this is the run clubs and how many kids show up on Saturday to run. And and they they run because they love it, but they have a tra- one little traveling trophy. Uh, and it's just about the percent of kids that they get engaged and and get there. So just, I think anything we do, we're going to get kids there.
Well, I'll speak to Erin's experience playing at the volleyball Bonanza in the parking lot at uh Foner Park. And Charlie Sheffield ran that and had it not been for that, Erin would have never unders- found the sport of volleyball, which as she progressed through it, ended up with a full ride scholarship at the collegiate level. So, I mean, there are, there is a silver lining to that. Now, Adam's experience, we won't go there.
Um, oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, uh, Mrs. Wells, I do remember that um as a kid, I'm the same age as Erin. Um, and one thing that I will mention um was that, not that you were scary. I didn't think you were scary, Mrs. Wells, only when you were my principal. Um, but I was going to say, I think that helps the kids like see that the high school coach is friendly and cool and and a human. Um, and that it helps them maybe feel comfortable as they move up through the GIPS school system and our athletic system. And it just helps with the level of comfortability, especially when all of our students are converging from all of our middle school locations um and coming together. They at least have, you know, their friends from their um middle school, but then they have an adult that they know and recognize too. So I was going to say, um, I I I support it and think it's a great idea.
And and we did have plans, and this was a COVID interruption, to um bring our uh coaches, PE teachers, back together in teams to really plan out what this would look like. Um, a lot of discussion about gym space. Um, the timing, like Cindy said, could we have volleyball for elementary in the spring instead of the fall? Um, but working out all those kinds of things. Um, and so my suggestion to move this forward is, is that we bring that team back together and get some more specifics um for you all and and keep it, keep it in the discussion phase. Don't let it just die.
I I do have one last question, and that is, we're not talking about having the PE curriculum revert back to being sports-focused, are we? Where everything is talked about in terms of, oh, now we're going to teach basketball, now we're going to teach volleyball?
And and I've been holding firm on that and that's what we've been talking about. These would be after-school programs um and and at the, at the home school so that, you know, kids could be there. Um, but really in the Nebraska physical education standards are real, have really moved us away from that.
And this is Bonnie, and I agree with a lot of the comments that would be, that have been shared, and I support this. Uh, I just want to make sure that, you know, keeping an equity focus on this, that it it'll give opportunities to more kids um rather than less because I think it's just so important that we give those opportunities. And and I do stress sometimes about the the gap between the kids who are able to play club sports and those who are not. And we have little control over that club sport since it's not part of school. So anything we can do to help close that gap so a child doesn't, you know, fall through the cracks or, you know, maybe when they're in fourth and fifth grade, they're not developed um and not, that don't do well, but by the time they get to high school, they could be very good. I just want to make sure there's way avenues that we can find those children and identify them and and continue to give them the opportunities.
Okay, great discussion uh here, uh everyone. Thank you so much. Um, and uh, Mrs. Sinkle, just to maybe kind of, you know, think about that as we move forward, I think what I'm hearing is that we have to be very intentional at the elementary and those middle school levels. So if we think about what's the edge, right, when you're in club sport, what what does that look like? You know, what are the experiences that you have in club sport, which we know is a difference-maker between how our students perform athletically at the high school? Then how are we building that into our structures? Uh, and I know that there was probably a lot of conversation uh whenever we went to the A, B, and C, and D uh while I wasn't here, but I can just imagine that it's also how we select our students for these competitive sports, making sure uh that we're being equitable uh in how we select them. Um, and so I think it's the training and so forth uh with our coaches. Uh, we, we are excited about the competitive edge, right? Uh, I I know I am as well, but we just want to make sure uh that we know those biases um that we are up against um and that we support our coaches through that process as we move forward. Okay, all right, now we're kind of moving into the closing. I guess I haven't done so well on time uh here today, uh but a lot of great information uh shared. So I want to maybe turn it over to Mrs. Sinkle to see how do you, uh during our closing opportunities, we'd like to get last words um from all of our board members. Um, hopefully uh we have Mrs. Worthington is still on here, she'll be able to take down some notes for us. Uh, but Mrs. Sinkle, I'll start with you. Just, you've heard a lot about the strategic plan, the game plan going forward, as well as our thinking about the fall and sports. Uh, just what are the last words you all like to share with us, uh to guide us for the opening of school?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for all the hard work everybody's doing because I know that in addition to focusing, staying focused on the strategic plan, um, but in a pandemic, when we were doing online learning and planning for a fall, that may look very different than any other fall we've, we've started school. Um, just can't say enough about the hard work everybody's put in and um the attention that you're giving to the kids, making sure, you know, the identifying the children who weren't engaged during the online learning is so critical. And we, we just can't thank you enough for all of that. Uh, and um, we know we've always focused on equity. We've always wanted every child to be a success, but it's just that much more heightened and mu- much more important since the events of the last few weeks in our country. And so when we, I just urge all of the board members to really take a close look at that equity statement. Um, Dr. Grover said it yesterday in the meeting, we want that to speak from the heart. We don't want it to just be a fluff piece or something that sounds good. It's, we want it to be something that we truly can live by um and that we do live by. Um, and so really take some time to to look that over. And then um just a reminder for all the board members that I sent out a a document where you can put in what conferences you want to attend this next year. And since the Cube Conference, which focuses around a lot around diversity, um, I would just encourage everybody, since it's virtual and we can all take the opportunity to attend, that you do take that advantage. Um, because I I think right now we just can't become uh, we, there's, we need to be more educated than we have been are now on every, on this topic. And so take every advantage that you can, so I'll end it there and um I'll go around, I'll just look at my screen. Erica, you want to go next?
Sure. Um, and I uh want to echo the thing because I know um also even in my uh normal eight to to five job, the work that we're doing on the side of COVID, I know exactly um what work we're putting in to making sure that we're doing what's best for our students um with the high, high hopes that we can be together um in the fall. And um, I'm also just thinking about, um, I guess because I haven't had the opportunity to go through a strategic plan, and I know we're going to start planning um for the next one, which I know just makes it kind of go like, oh, my goodness, I can't believe, you know, we're already going into year. I can't believe, you know, we're already going into year four. But I look forward to being a part of that process as well. Since I wasn't a part of that process before, so I can continue to learn more. So we can continue to do what's best for our students through equity and access.
Okay, um, Mrs. Shet.
Okay, um, I just, I just want to thank you guys for taking the time and, and giving us all this great information, great data. You know, I, I guess first and foremost in my mind is, is the whole COVID thing, racial tensions. I guess, I don't know, this, this, this exchange I had yesterday just kind of really threw me for a loop. And it made me realize how much raw emotion and, and anger is, is out there. And, um, when we talk about, you know, the, the rude, mean bullying campaign and, and some of those kind of things. An upcoming very divisive election. I, I just, I hope, I hope we can find ways to help kids. I, I mean, I'm having a hard time navigating this and I can't imagine being a kid in this environment. And trying to navigate those feelings and the tensions that they bring to school. From, from their parents and, and those kinds of things. So I, I just think it's something we need to be aware of and, and in the back of our minds. So, um, I think you've done an awesome job navigating a strategic plan through a pandemic. I don't know many boards that have had to do that ever before. And so I, I just appreciate everything everybody's done. And I am going to say adios here. I've got to get some things ready for this evening. So you're welcome to stop by, watch Elise, but thank you for your time.
Good luck to Elise.
Yes. Now Heidi, good luck to Elise.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Ink, you want to go next?
I have trouble unmeeting myself. Nice afternoon. Well, not only where I'm at, but also the retreat. But, um. The survey information was really interesting. I wish everybody could answer the survey, but I know that that's not realistic. But really interesting, the, the data that Dr. Dahl presented is also very interesting to me. So the work on the strategic plan, it's kind of hard to believe that we can already be 70 to 80% done with that. And that's, that's amazing work by all of you. I love the sports conversation. I just think if we keep thinking about ways to engage our kids. We're going to be better off. Kids are going to want to be at school. They're going to want to, um, do their coursework so they can play their passion. Or whether it be, you know, from, um, sports to choir, to show choir. I mean, we're, we're having kids try out for show choir in the middle school levels. So why not have them try out for sports? Everybody makes show choir in the middle school. My daughter was one of those who did not make show choir in middle school. So I totally get that. We've gone from one end of the spectrum to another end of the spectrum of kind of getting ready. Rid of competition and having participation ribbons, which from an equity lens, it's important that everyone has an opportunity. But at some point, you know, you, you have to try out for things and understand disappointment and understand success. Everybody has an opportunity for success someplace. So it's just finding all of those niches and having the funding to be able to pay for all of those niches. Of all of those individuals that we have. So, um, really good afternoon and thank everybody on the cabinet for all of their work. Because you guys, you guys do an amazing job. I know this is more than one minute, but I had a conversation with a former teacher who was in Omaha. Who I may or may not be related to and she's retired and she was telling me what a joke e-learning was. And so, um, I said, you just can't say carte blanche that e-learning is a joke. So, um, and you're only hearing what you've heard from some people that you know. But I had to bite my tongue a lot because I think here we've done, in the amount of time that we had to get it ready. We've done a great job. We're learning from what worked and what didn't work. And we're working to make it better so we can reach all of those kids in whatever manner is best for them.
Thank you. Mrs. Albers.
I just want to say thanks to everybody for all their hard work, Cabinet, Dr. Grover, Mrs. Wells, everybody. Really have been impressed with, uh, what you guys have all been able to accomplish during this pandemic. It's amazing. And I guess I just always am thinking about the equity piece and, um. And we need to keep soccer. So that's really all I have to say. And just keep that lens on with all the decisions that we make and how it affects all kids.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I'm not going to repeat what everyone else has just said. I think for me, picking up on the, the data and looking at our engagement, which is reality. Knowing that we do have some hurdles that we're going to have to overcome as we go forward. If we offer that e-learning as an option. So, um, you know, it's, it's reality, it's where we're at. And I guess it's, it's good to see that information, whether it's startling or not, I don't know. It's just, it is reality. And again, as we go forward, I'm glad we're looking at, um, you know, the whys and how we can accommodate that. To me, that was the big takeaway for today.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bros.
Well, I'm going to be like Terry, I'm not going to repeat everything. I will say to everybody that I was around in 96 when we made the transition from middle school or junior high schools to middle school. And at that time, the whole idea about athletics and competition was inclusion versus exclusion. And I just don't want us to get back to becoming mini junior high schools again. That said, um, Mrs. or Dr. Palmer must have an incredible staff. Because as I look at the, um, report that we got regarding the strategic plan. I counted overnight, over 30 some areas of responsibility that she and her team had to be responsible for. And, and she must be keeping all the plates spinning and all the balls flying around. Because it doesn't look like she's missed a step. I enjoyed this data that we got. I'm a data person, I love it. And I liked the survey of the parents. It reminded me that not too long ago, volunteers and vendors for the Nebraska State Fair were given a survey to complete. In much the same lines, will you wear a mask if you are coming out here? If we have the fair, uh, will you not wear a mask? Will you continue to volunteer those kinds of questions? And it seems like, I'll be anxious to see what those results are and how well they mirror some of the responses we got from our parents.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Barsonis.
Hear me? There you go. Thank you all. Always amazed these for the work that is being done. You know, I think it's very easy sometimes to get caught up as human beings in the, uh, are we doing this right or not? Either or mentality, but I think again, we're doing a lot of what we can. I, I think owning what we do wrong or what we are learning still and we, we're going to get better. I think it's with this, it's just like the conversation with equity and, and diversity and all that. You know, I, I'm, we're never going to get to a point where it's, uh, it's not a problem to solve per se. As much as how do we continue to do it better? Every year we'll have new staff, we'll have new kids and it's a journey. So the, the, the approach of keeping equity in mind, you know, it's really just about, uh, being aware of the richness that we have. And I, I do want all of you to, to feel comfortable because I've been in this situation before. So I just want to put it on the table. Never feel that you can't say anything where you might think it's a race issue and how is that going to make me feel? Because that's part of the race conversation. That's part of the equity conversation and it can get, can get polarized at sometimes. So I guess what I'm saying is not that you need my permission, but, uh, you have full permission to engage in those conversations. And never feel that as we're talking in issues of equity or issues of diversity. That there is anything that you can't, that you're afraid of, you know, how, how, how would Carlos respond of whatever maybe. And same with the staff and the administrators. I think it's something that we just have to keep those tough conversations ahead. And you know, like Bonnie said, I was talking to one of my good friends. He's a black young man in Lincoln and my experience, it's different than his. I, I'm, I'm an immigrant to this country. So there's still a lot of history that I have to learn about, uh, how it applies to the United States. So I think it's just a learning journey for all of us. But I think, uh, I'm glad we're, we're talking about it. I'm glad we're saying again, how do we make it better every day? How do we become stronger and better together? Thank you all for your time. I always enjoy, uh, learning from all of you. Thank you all the staff, all the teachers, all the administrators, everyone with GIPS through this journey. Because we are making it better, we're making a difference. So thank you all.
Thank you. And Mrs. Gordermaker.
Um, I really enjoyed today just hearing all of everyone's different point of view. I'm a little bit nervous about the mask conversation going forward in, in the fall. I feel like we're going to get some, some vitriol from some parents. And I think the more we can just kind of prepare ourselves for that and, and kind of steel ourselves and, and get ready for it. Maybe brace for impact a little bit. It just is very interesting to me, you know, if you ask people why they hate masks so much. And, you know, you hear the many different reasons and, but kids don't have those reasons. Kids, they wear a mask because mom and dad do, or because grandma and grandpa do. And I think the more that we can just be good role models for the kids and just, you know, sometimes there's just rules. There are rules and you have to follow them. And so I, that was a whole jumble of thoughts, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And Dr. Grover, I think that's all of us.
Well, certainly, uh, thank you all so much for your input and your support. The good news is that we are in this together and there is certainly more to come. So thank you so much, everyone. And again, um, I do want to thank our amazing team. Somebody mentioned Dr. Palmer and you're absolutely right because now she's on another call with a group of teachers, uh, working through. But I would say that about all of our teams. That just the amazing work of how it's, it's just like we're living in two zones. They're definitely trying to stay true to everything that we're trying to achieve in such a, a new environment. So I just want to say to the community, you are certainly in good hands with Grand Island Public Schools. So thank you, everyone. See you next time.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.